We're good, okay. Good evening, everybody. It is September eleventh, two thousand and nineteen. We can take a moment if we want to just reflect on this date in history and what it meant for our country and for a lot of people that probably many of us know or know of, and just take a moment to remember everybody that lost their life on that day. And I'll begin by reading our vision statement. The Ashland Public Schools will be a model district that embraces the academic and social-emotional growth of all students through a supportive collaborative and challenging experience. Our students will develop into lifelong learners who will contribute positively to society. This meeting is being recorded by WACA Cable TV. Our order of business this evening is a call to order, our opening procedures, agenda review and adoption, our recognitions and student presentations, which include the Fall 2019 retirees, introduction of new staff. We'll have a minute for public comment, and then we will hear from decisions at every turn, coalition update on the positive community norms, the APS pre-K through five literacy journey program, Dr. Vera, North American Hockey Academy approval of private school and district, the blueprint for continuous student improvement, priority, vision and mission final approval, student activity counts 2019-2020, Ashland Cable access board appointment, the Warren School new ESP position, a pilot for the DESE superintendent rubric, approval of state and federal grants, approval of DESE grant spending literacy materials, appointment of school committee member to the negotiations subcommittee, and the administrative items include the superintendent's report, the assistant superintendent's report, Warren approvals, and policy updates, consent actions, approval of minutes, August thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen, and then we will adjourn. Is everybody okay with the order of business this evening?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. And we will start with our student presentations and recognitions with the Fall 2019 retirees.
Great, thank you, Ms. Stasi. First and foremost, it's always over the summer, we get notifications of potential retirees that weren't planning necessarily on retiring at the end of last year when we host a celebration. So, we do have three, and one is present tonight, but I want to mention the other two. Kim Arnold, who was an Ashland Middle School English teacher, retired after twelve years, and Tina Hunter, Christina Hunter, was a guidance secretary at Ashland High School for thirteen years as well, and I want to just thank them for their service to the Ashland Public Schools. And then I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kyra and Mr. Regan.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. It's with sadness that we look at this next retirement, of having the privilege to be here for the last three and a half years and be able to work with Manny. It's been absolutely incredible. To see someone who takes such great pride in their work each and every day, shows a love for children, shows a love for all of the staff and our families and our schools, it's absolutely incredible to think of what he's accomplished in thirty-one years, and just what a great member of our school community he has been throughout that time. Whether it be, again, his work or the small things that you don't see as school committee members, but Manny speaks Portuguese, and we have many students who do not speak English and will come to the school, and Manny's able to go over with some kind words and just those gentle reminders of letting the children know that they're cared about and that they're in a great town with amazing people. Manny has been absolutely remarkable for us.
So, I'm really privileged to be able to talk about my friend Manny. When I came to Ashland eight years ago, Manny and I had many early mornings together where we chatted, and he quickly became one of my very favorite people in the town of Ashland. And it's because when you speak with him, he just has this passion for life, a passion for what he does, and if an educator leaves a legacy, I would imagine it's about how the kids in a building feel about you. And every student that goes through the Warren School really loves Manny. I know for one, because I've got one with him right now, and she always talks about her teachers and her friends, but every dinner conversation revolves around, "I saw Mr. Manny today," or "He talked to me," or "Had a joke for me," and it just goes to show how much he means to the entire community. So Manny, it's really a pleasure to be able to be up here and speak to the school committee about you and the community about you, and just to say thank you for your friendship and say thank you for being just a tremendous employee for the Ashland Public Schools.
Manny.
Manny.
Manny, on behalf of this school committee and the entire Ashland Public Schools, you have been the heartbeat of this school system for decades, and we thank you for everything you've contributed to our children and to our school system, and we wish you many happy years on your next journey. Thank you.
Thank God.
If I could, I'd just like to echo what they said. I mean, there's not a person that goes through war and that doesn't remember Manny. And I remember he got a longevity award, was it last year? And it was amazing. Not only the impact you have on the kids, but your peers, the way they, it was like a rock star was going up on the stage. The place went nuts. And both my kids remember you, so many people remember you, and you'll be missed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Manny.
Okay.
Okay. Introduction of new staff, please.
Sarah, do you want to start?
Yeah.
Hi, Sarah.
Hi, how are you? We have four new staff members at the Pittaway and preschool with us. Abby Adams joins us as a classroom ESP. Shannon Lambert joins us as an ABA, educational support personnel, and then Megan Callahan and Brittany DeMichael moved over from the middle school, and they'll be working with us at the preschool as ABA ESPs as well.
Thank you. Are you here? Any of you here?
They're not here today.
You're probably watching on TV.
I'm sure they are.
All three, all three of them.
Welcome to Ashland. Okay, next.
At the Warren School, we have ten new staff members and one returning staff member. We do have three, two that are here tonight, excuse me. We have Rachel Wright, our new school librarian, and also Tiffany Farrell, one of our new second grade teachers.
Welcome, ladies.
In addition, we have in kindergarten Kerry Coburn and coming over from Pittaway, Megan Robshaw. In first grade, Bridget Sistar. Also joining Tiffany in second grade is Jody Levy and Sarah Turgeon. New ESPs working at the school, Claudia Bialzak, who's transferred over from Paul's office. Also, Schweta and Alyssa Peterson. Returning to us, who was at home for about the last year raising her children, is Robin Claffey as a long-term sub this fall. So, we're very excited to have returning faces and some new amazing educators working with us.
Excellent, welcome, everybody.
We have quite the list of new employees at Mendez, so bear with me here, some of them are with us tonight as well. Heidi Campersall is a nutrition services. Kristin Babinski is an ESP. Mike Connor returns to Mendez in an official capacity after many years as a substitute and a retiree as an ESP. Pollyanna Srinobina is with us tonight. She's our new ELL teacher. Gabby Capola Flynn is an ABA. Ally Lizama Fontaine is our new music teacher. Michaela Morse, a former Ashland High School graduate, is here tonight with us, and she joins us as a long-term sub in our multi-grade neighborhood program. Nicole Natalie has rejoined us as a long-term sub, a grade-three teacher as well. Jeanie Nisbet is coming back to Ashland, and she's serving as our special education team chair. Maggie Zanidis is an ESP. I believe Steven is with us as well. Steven Zemya is an ABA ESP.
Welcome.
Kelly Parenti is with us as an ESP. Lisa Martin is our new OT. Jill Sacramona is our new CODA. Christine Hillier has moved from an ESP to a grade-four teaching position. Joe Kimiante is joining us again for a long-term sub school psychology position. He's with us tonight. And finally, Melinda Alcioni joins us as a long-term sub ESP.
Thank you, Mike, and welcome to everybody. We're working at the Mendez School.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Dave.
The middle school also has quite the list that we'll go through, that we have many people to welcome this year, which is great. Karen McAlpine, who's here, is our new point-six world language teacher. Meredith Stanton is our new sixth-grade ELA teacher. Josephine Bryan is our new drama teacher. Bradley Carlson is here, and he is our long-term sub sixth-grade social studies for the year. Dan Keller is our new sixth, sorry, seventh-grade ELA teacher. Thomas Hilli is a new special education teacher. Elizabeth Meyer, who's here, is our new ELL teacher. We have several new ESPs as well. Calvin Himmelberger is ESP working with us this year. Barbara Jalodas is here, she's a new ESP as well. Emily Moore is a new ESP, working in eighth grade. Jody Carmignani is a new ESP for us this year. John Chimpaglia is also a new ESP working with us. Ree Melnick coming, is an ESP coming from Pittaway, is working at the middle school this year, and Mr. Kyra mentioned, but Jeanie Nisbet also comes over to the middle school as a team chair. So, we have quite the showing here, and we welcome them all. It's been a great start to the school year so far. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, welcome, everybody.
Kelly.
Hi, everyone, welcome back. At the high school, we are welcoming Heather Allen as a nurse. She'll be with us two days a week, so we now have three part-time nurses working with us. Kristin Alfons is our new second cook. We have Brian Cody has joined us as our new dean of students. Christine Carney, I didn't see her, okay, she is our new STEM teacher. Michael J. Lepena is one of our Spanish teachers, she's a long-term sub for the year. Taylor Federico Groms is our new ELL ESP. Brad Jackson is joining us as a new wellness teacher. We have Reggie Jardone, who is one of our new English teachers. Sarah Lovely is a new Spanish teacher as well. We have Lou Santiago joining us as the counseling secretary. And finally, Cameron Thomas is our new history teacher.
Welcome, everybody.
And we have a surprise retiree. I know the superintendent mentioned that we had a couple retirements over the summer, one of whom was Christina Hunter, who was at the high school for thirteen years. Tina started in the October before we moved to the new building, so was in the old building for a month or two, and then we, same year that I did, and provided support and guidance and leadership within that department for, and helped to our students for a very long time, and is currently down in Chatham, enjoying retired life, from what I understand.
You look really sad to be retired.
You're probably enjoying everyone being gone from there, but I know there's been a lot of shark watching all summer. So, Tina, thank you for all the work that you did for us at Ashland Public Schools. You were missed.
And I just want to, before Laura, you get up as well, I think it's important to know that when I was the high school principal and Kelly as well, the work you did, especially for me around graduation, I never, ever had to worry about, you know, things being organized and ready to go on that Sunday morning at eight o'clock when I show up, just to make sure, I think Tina had it all covered. She had the scholarships, if you've been to graduation, which I know you all have, people just know what they have to do, when and when they have to do it. And Tina took such pleasure, I don't know if it's pleasure, but pride in actually organizing and making sure that that ran smoothly is one of the most important days for our kids as they're exiting our system. So, thank you, Tina, so much from that piece, from me.
We didn't think you'd come back over the bridge.
Yeah, right.
I said I didn't think you'd come back over the bridge, but now that we know that you will. June seventh.
You may need some help.
So, this is to remind you of your thirteen years devoted to service and to thank you for them, and we appreciate everything that you've done for us. I know, when Jim says graduation, this is the friendly face, I don't know, Jim knows that, so the chair usually speaks at graduation, and I've been hanging in that chair for a while, and somehow they always put me after the really sad song, which they changed this year because they knew that I would not survive. But having Tina next to me as a friendly face, knowing that she had everything under control, but also my poor kids going through the high school and walking into guys and seeing the friendly face and knowing all the work that you do behind the scenes, and I'm sure some of my colleagues up here can attest to that and some of you out in the audience, we wish you well for your next phase and thank you for everything.
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tina.
All right. We're about to have a presentation, but first I need to ask if there's any member of the public that would like to say anything to school committee.
Sure.
And it's also perfectly fine for you to.
Yeah, get up and leave, please.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Thanks for coming.
All right, everybody.
Have a great year, everybody.
Have a good bye.
Have a good year. Have a good year.
Thank you.
Night, thank you. Manny, thanks again. We will miss you very much.
The kids will miss you.
Yeah.
Manny's awesome.
My three kids, twenty-two, twenty, seventeen. Well, Finn's still there, but they all, right?
Every kid that goes through there knows Manny.
Oh, yeah.
Anybody who thinks that the story of my staff isn't an important part of that community is.
That's standing ovation.
Yeah, it was amazing. Even like this year, there's still longevity awards. Nothing, you know, nothing like what Manny, it was both Manny and Sandy Vino that year.
Yeah.
Yeah, that came down.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so they're both getting longevity awards. They're both.
There it goes, Miles. Thank you.
And, yeah, it was amazing. Manny's awesome.
Okay, so we would like to invite decisions at every turn coalition to fill us in on the positive community norms.
Yeah, I can see it, so.
Yeah.
I think as long as it's on the computer, it'll be on the computer. He'll be able to put it on the rack or something.
While we're waiting, I'll just go ahead and introduce myself for the people in the room who don't know me, though I think many people on the committee do. My name's Samia, I'm the project coordinator for decisions at every turn, which is our town's youth substance use prevention coalition. And first off, thank you for allowing me to come tonight on their first big meeting of the school year to sort of share with you some of our data from a survey that we held at the end of last school year, actually, at the middle school, about a lot of different things. Substance use, yes, but also about some other positive norms and protective beliefs that we see at the middle school, which I will tell you about here in a minute when the presentation comes up and everybody can actually see it.
Thanks, Samia.
Yes.
Sometimes we have some technical difficulties.
That's okay. That's the life, right?
Yeah.
Do you need me to help with anything?
I don't know. I thought Paul had it squared away. Not just Paul, the other Paul.
Which one? The other, the other other Paul?
The other other Paul.
A third Paul.
They do have, I think they have a PowerPoint in their back as well.
Okay.
They do not put up a picture.
I, I, we definitely got it.
I did get it pretty, I did get it pretty late to.
We got it, okay, great.
Oh, they print out, okay.
It was sent to us by email, I think afterwards, but I definitely did see it, yeah.
Okay, yeah, yeah. I didn't know that was worked.
We have it.
Making sure it was perfect up until late yesterday.
Thank you, and I know you didn't have a lot of time.
No, it's okay.
But I saw it.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Then maybe I can just sort of start going through it if you have it. The first couple of slides aren't really graphics-heavy, so I can just sort of give a little bit of background about why we actually chose to do this survey at the middle school. So, the survey that we implemented is called the Positive Community Norm Survey, and we've actually implemented it at the high school in two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and sixteen, and two thousand and eighteen. The main outcome we've had at the high school is actually the Stand campaign, which is a positive social norms campaign, basically taking data from the Positive Community Norm Survey that we've had at the high school, as well as the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey that's given to the middle and high school, but we only use the high school data every two years. And we take messages from that about data that shows us that most youth are actually making very healthy choices about substance use, they're not using drugs or alcohol at all, and most youth also have protective behaviors. They believe that using substances at their age could be harmful to them, mostly they believe that other people their age shouldn't be using substances, and mostly they want other people their age should not be using substances. So, I have an example of one of the Stand posters, which I'll pull up here soon, but sort of the reason that we, we'll do it, it'll be fine. The reason that we want to sort of message these types of messages to our youth at the high school level is because we know from the Positive Community Norm Survey that there's also a lot of perceived norms that substance use is far more prevalent amongst youth than it actually is, and that it's far more accepted than it actually is. The data in general tells us that if youth believe that substance use is more prevalent or that it's more accepted, that makes them more likely to use themselves. So, we know that there's this perceived norm, that it is prevalent, that it is accepted, and we know there's this actual norm that it's not prevalent and it's not approved of very highly, so we want to try and bring those two perceptions together. Over the past five years that we've been doing the Stand campaign primarily through posters at Ashland High School, we've really seen that that gap has started to close, and that at least at the high school, we've seen that more and more students are, perceived norms are starting to match with what the actual norms are, that substance use is fairly low, that, or that at least substance use isn't caught, isn't the norm at the high school, and that most students are, don't approve of substance use as well. So, because we had seen that effect at the high school, we thought, well, we always want to try and start prevention as early as possible, so we approached the middle school administration with Dave's help to see if maybe we could implement this survey here at the middle school and maybe start messaging those same types of social norming messages back to the students there. I'll just move, I'll move on to my next slide, which is also just all text, but we worked with the Montana State University Center for Health and Safety Culture, which is the same organization that we had worked with to develop the Positive Community Norm Survey at the high school, so they were very familiar with us. But since we knew that at, we know from the Metro West survey that substance use itself at the middle school is very, very low year after year and continuing to go down, so we knew we wanted to ask questions about that, but we knew we also wanted to ask questions about other things, for example, some of the values that they teach in the health classes, like being responsible, being respectful, and making healthy choices. And we knew that we could ask that about, we could ask questions about those to the students at the middle school and sort of get their attitudes and values, attitudes and beliefs about those behaviors as well, to maybe try and get an idea of how common those were amongst the student body, and if we could also say back to the middle school students, hey, you really do like care about your peers, you care about yourself. So, we worked with the middle school administration, we worked with MSU and with us as the leadership of the coalition to develop a set of questions that really got at all of those. We ended up delivering the survey via paper form at the middle school in June of the end of last school year. That went off to MSU, they conducted a number of analyses on the data to get some of the numbers back, and they delivered that back to us in August, on August eighth, two thousand and nineteen. Some of the things that the survey actually ended up assessing were student attitudes and behaviors on substance use, but also we asked them about school culture, some of those other questions about respect, responsibility, making healthy choices. And we also asked students to give us their perceptions of what most Ashland Middle School students thought, what most Ashland Middle School teachers thought, and we also asked them questions about what they thought most Ashland High School students might think about some of those topics. And now we are getting into graph territory, so I will have to take a pause. This will be harder to explain without the visuals.
You have it on your screen, right?
She does.
Yeah. So, if we can't get there, you can explain it as if we're looking at it, because at least it will be recorded, and we can go back and try to put it all together.
Sure. Do you want to give it one more shot?
Sure, absolutely.
And then we'll. Okay. Sorry about that. Not then, yes, I will jump into my explanation.
I know, it makes it a little bit more difficult for you, but you could be hanging around for a while, doesn't look like.
That's fine.
Two or three things?
I am playing.
Yeah, we have the charts, so we can, we have the ability to put it together.
Okay, great. Yeah. One more shot, and then I'll go into explaining the rest of it.
Is it? Yeah. Yeah, I know, right? Should move on now soon because we have a heavy.
Yeah.
Yeah, must be a, must be up there because this thing is set.
Okay. All right. Then if you have.
Yeah, I just.
If you have a chart, I'll go ahead and explain.
We have it.
Sorry to everybody else, because you're going to hear a lot of numbers here in a second, but I'll explain some of those as well. Do you have color versions also?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, then the first chart you will see is titled Student Attitudes and Perceptions of Being Respectful, Being Responsible, and Making Healthy Choices. That has sort of three clusters of bars. Underneath the first one, it says being respectful, being responsible, is under the second one, and making healthy choices is the third. This represents the students' answers to a series of questions about how important they thought these three, these three values were. So, students, the bars represent the number of students who marked, the students who marked that these were important or very important for three different groups. So, the blue bars are students responding about their own self, about whether they felt that being respectful, being responsible, or making.
Um, it was sent to us by email, I think afterwards, but I definitely did see it, yeah. Thank you. We have it.
Making sure it was perfect up until late yesterday.
Thank you, and I know you didn't have a lot of time.
No, it's okay.
But I saw it.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Uh, then maybe I can just sort of start going through it if you have it. Um, the first couple of slides aren't really graphics heavy, so I can just sort of give a little bit of background about why we actually chose to do this survey at the middle school. Uh, so the survey that we implemented is called the Positive Community Norm Survey, uh, and we've actually implemented it at the high school in twenty fourteen, twenty sixteen, and twenty eighteen. Uh, the main outcome we've had at the high school is actually the Stand Campaign, uh, which is a positive social norms campaign, basically taking data from the Positive Community Norm Survey that we've had at the high school, as well as the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey that's given to the middle and high school, but we only use the high school data every two years. And we, uh, take messages from that, uh, about data that shows us that most youth are actually making very healthy choices about substance use. They're not using drugs or alcohol at all. Uh, and most youth also have, um, protective behaviors. They believe that using substances, using substances at their age could be harmful to them. Uh, mostly they believe that other people their age shouldn't be using substances, and mostly they want other people their age to not be using substances. Um, so I have an example of one of the Stand posters, which I'll pull up here soon, but sort of the reason that we will, we'll do it, it'll be fine. Um, the reason that we want to sort of message these types of messages to our youth at the high school level is because we know from the Positive Community Norm Survey, uh, that there's also a lot of perceived norms that substance use is far more prevalent amongst youth than it actually is, and that it's far more accepted than it actually is. Uh, the data in general tells us that if youth believe that, uh, substance use is more prevalent or that it's more accepted, that makes them more likely to use themselves. So, we know that there's this perceived norm, that it is prevalent, that it is accepted, and we know there's this actual norm that it's not prevalent and it's not, uh, approved of very highly. So we want to try and bring those two perceptions together. Uh, over the past five years that we've been doing the Stand Campaign primarily through posters at Ashland High School, uh, we've really seen that that gap has started to close, and that, at least at the high school, we've, uh, seen that more and more students are, uh, perceive norms are starting to match with what the actual norms are. That substance use is fairly low, that, um, or that at least substance use isn't caught, isn't the norm at the high school, uh, and that, uh, most students are, don't approve of substance use as well. Uh, so because we had seen that effect at the high school, we thought, well, we always want to try and start prevention as early as possible. Uh, so we approached the middle school administration with Dave's help to see, uh, if maybe we could implement this survey here at the middle school and maybe start messaging those same types of, uh, social norming messages back to the students there. Um, I'll just move, I'll move on to my next slide, uh, which is also just all text. Uh, but we worked with the Montana State University Center for Health and Safety Culture, which is the same organization that we had worked with to develop the Positive Community Norm Survey at the high school. So they were very familiar with us. Um, but since we knew that at, we know from the Metro West survey that substance use itself at the middle school is very, very low year after year and continuing to go down. So we knew we wanted to ask questions about that, but we knew we also wanted to ask questions about other things. Uh, for example, some of the, um, values that they teach in the health classes, like being responsible, being respectful, and making healthy choices. And we knew that we could ask that about, we could ask questions about those to the students at the middle school and sort of get their attitudes and value, attitudes and beliefs about, um, those behaviors as well to maybe try and get an idea of how common those were amongst the student body, and if we could also say back to the middle school students, hey, you really do like care about your peers, you care about yourself. Um, so we worked with, uh, the middle school administration, we worked with MSU, and with us as the leadership of the coalition to develop a set of questions that really got at all of those. Uh, we ended up, uh, delivering the survey via paper form, uh, at the middle school in June of the end of last school year. Uh, that went off to MSU. They conducted a number of analyses on the data to get some of the numbers back, uh, and they delivered that back to us in August, on, uh, August eighth, twenty nineteen. Um, some of the, the, uh, things that the survey actually ended up assessing were student attitudes and behaviors on substance use, but also we asked them about school culture, some of those other questions about respect, responsibility, making healthy choices. And we also asked students to give us their perceptions of what most Ashland middle school students thought, what most Ashland middle school teachers thought, and we also asked some questions about what they thought most Ashland high school students might think about some of those topics. And now we are getting into graph territory, so I will have to take a pause. This will be harder to explain without the visuals.
You have it on your screen, right?
She does.
Yeah.
So if we can't get there, you can explain it as if we're looking at it, because at least it will be recorded, and we can go back and try to put it all together.
Okay. Okay, sure. Do you want to give it one more shot?
Sure, absolutely.
And then we'll... Okay. Sorry about that. Not then, yes, I will jump into my explanation.
I know, it makes it a little bit more difficult for you, but you could be hanging around for a while, doesn't look like.
That's fine. I am playing.
Yeah, we have the charts, so we can, we have the ability to put it together.
Okay, great. One more shot, and then I'll go into explaining the rest of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, must be a...
Yeah, that's...
Must be up there, because this thing is set.
Okay.
Is set to...
All right. Then if you have...
Yeah, I just...
If you have a chart, I'll go ahead and explain. Sorry to everybody else, because you're gonna hear a lot of numbers here in a second.
We have it.
Um, but I'll, I'll explain some of those as well. Do you have color versions also?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, so then the first chart, uh, you will see is titled Student Attitudes and Perceptions of Being Respectful, Being Responsible, and Making Healthy Choices. Uh, that has sort of three clusters of bars. Underneath the first one, it says being respectful, being responsible. It's under the second one, and making healthy choices is the third. Uh, this represents the students' answers to a series of questions about how important they thought these three, uh, these three values were. So students, the bars represent the number of students who marked, the students who marked that these were important or very important for three different groups. So the blue bars are students responding about their own self, about whether they felt that being respectful, being responsible, or making healthy choices was very important or important to them. The red bar is the students' response when they were asked how they felt most Ashland middle school students would respond. So the red bar is students responding that they felt, the percentage of students who responded to this survey who felt that most Ashland middle school students thought being respectful, being responsible, and making healthy choices were important or very important. And the green bar is the percentage of students who responded that they felt that most Ashland middle school teachers would feel that being respectful, being responsible, and making healthy choices were important. So you'll see the blue bars, which are students responding about their own feelings, whether they felt these things were important or very important, are fairly high. Uh, seventy percent of students responded that they thought being respectful was very important or important to them. The, about eighty percent of students responded that being responsible was important or very important to them. Uh, and again, around eighty percent of students responded that making healthy choices was very important or important to them. Um, the red bars for all three are also, you'll see they're a little bit lower than the blue bars, but they're, um, still pretty high. They still show, uh, pretty high numbers. Uh, so when, th- these were the, um, responses of students who took the survey about how they felt about most Ashland middle school students in general. Um, so sixty-four percent of students who took this survey felt that most Ashland students also thought being respectful was important or very important. Uh, about sixty percent of the people who took this survey thought most Ashland middle school students thought being responsible was important or very important. And sixty-five percent of the students who took this survey thought most Ashland students would think that making healthy choices was very important or important. So, generally, uh, in this, when, uh, you see the word "most," that wasn't ever clearly defined for students to make the decision on this survey. So when the students were taking the survey and thinking of like, okay, what, how many is most students, they had to make that decision themselves. Um, but you see with the red bars that sort of, the students who were responding to this survey, a fairly high number of them thought the majority of Ashland students would share these values. Um, this is also true about the green bars, which is representative of what the students thought about the majority of Ashland teachers. So these are really quite high. Uh, so about eighty percent for being respectful and being responsible. So the students on this, uh, about eighty percent of them responded that they felt most Ashland middle school teachers would be, would think that, uh, being respectful and being responsible were very important or important. And then, uh, seventy-nine percent of the students who took this survey responded that they felt most Ashland middle school teachers thought that making healthy choices were important or very important. So we see there's some sort of positive news here about sort of the culture at Ashland Middle School about, around being respectful, being responsible, and making healthy choices. Does anybody have any questions before I move on to the next one? This is definitely, the data can be a little tricky. Um, but if not, then I will move on to the next one. Uh, so the next chart is called Student Attitudes and Perceptions Towards Health, Safety, Respect, and Responsibility. Uh, on these questions, students were asked to respond how strongly they agreed or how strongly they thought most Ashland middle school students would agree to the following statements, uh, which were, I care about the health of students in my school, I care about the safety of the students in my school, uh, I believe our school is a better place when students are respectful, I believe our school is a better place when students act responsibly, I want the students in my school to be respectful of other students, and I want the students in my school to be respectful of the teachers in my school. And again, you'll see the blue bars, which again represent the students' own response about how they feel, are all really fairly high amongst these. Uh, seventy-five percent for caring about the health of students, ninety percent for caring about the safety of students, uh, eighty-three percent for believing the school would be a better place, uh, when students are respectful, eighty-five percent when student, uh, believing the school would be a better place when students act responsibly, ninety percent with I want the students in my school to be respectful of other students, and eighty-seven percent with I want the students in my school to be respectful of the teachers at my school. So again, showing strongly across the board that most Ashland middle school students themselves feel that they really agree, strongly agree or agree with these statements. Uh, the red bar again is the students who took this survey answering how they felt most Ashland middle school students would respond to these questions. So fifty-six percent of the students who took this survey marked that they felt most Ashland middle school students would also agree or strongly agree about, uh, that they care about the health of students in their school. Um, and that's the, so it's the same for the other ones. So it's, uh, sixty-seven percent of the students who took this survey responded that they felt most Ashland middle school students would respond, I care about the safety of the students in my school. Fifty-nine percent, uh, felt that most Ashland students would, uh, agree or strongly agree that they believe their school is a better place when students are respectful. Fifty-six percent of the students responded that they felt most Ashland students, uh, would agree or strongly agree with, uh, the statement that I believe our school is a better place when students act responsibly. Sixty-one percent with, uh, felt that most Ashland students would agree or strongly agree that they want students at their school to be respectful of other students. And then fifty-four percent with, uh, responding that they felt most Ashland students would, uh, agree, would want the students in their school to be respectful of teachers in their school. So again, showing some positive data about, uh, the culture at the school, the, the feelings that the students they themselves have and how they perceive the other students around them as well. Does anybody have any questions about that slide? Not, I will move on. So that sort of covers the, um, non-substance use specific related highlights, because we really did want to ask questions about that school culture, um, because that's more appropriate for students of that age, and we thought we could get some good data, and we did. Um, so we were happy to see some of those. Uh, but moving on, the last two charts that you'll see are both sort of substance use specific, since we did also, that's what we've done with Stand at the High School, we wanted to kind of dig into some of those beliefs there, start thinking about doing prevention at those younger grades as well. Um, so the next, uh, slide you'll see called Student Beliefs and Perceptions About Youth Substance Use. Uh, on this, again, the students were asked, uh, about how strongly they agreed with the following statements, uh, or how strong, how they felt most Ashland middle school students would agree with the following statements. And on this, you'll see there's a third set of bars in purple, uh, and that was students responding about how they felt most Ashland high school students would feel about these statements. So the statements are drinking alcohol is never a good thing for anyone my age to do, uh, using commercial tobacco is never a good thing for anyone my age to do, uh, using electronic vapor products is never a good thing for anyone my age to do, and using marijuana is never a good thing for anyone my age to do. Again, the blue bar is students responding about how strongly they personally agreed, and you'll see, again, these are all, uh, mostly above ninety percent, yeah, for all of these. So very strong belief with the middle school population that, uh, using any of these substances is not a good thing for anyone their age to do. Um, the red bar is again, students responding how they felt most Ashland middle school students would respond to these questions, and again, fairly high numbers there with students perceiving that most Ashland students would agree with these statements. Uh, we saw some interesting stuff when we get to the high school data. Um, there, uh, most of the time, the majority of the students responding to this survey didn't respond that they felt most Ashland high school students would agree or strongly agree. So only forty-one percent of middle school students said that they felt most Ashland high school students would agree or strongly agree that drinking alcohol is never a good thing. Uh, only fifty, fifty-four percent, so a little bit above fifty, uh, fifty-four percent said that they felt most Ashland high school students would agree or strongly agree with, uh, the statement about using commercial tobacco. Uh, I can't read it here, but I think it's thirty-three percent said that most Ashland high school students would, uh, strongly agree that using electronic vapor products. So that's any e-cigarette, Juul, any of the products where you heat up some type of liquid and breathe in the aerosol, uh, is never a good thing for anyone their age to do. And then forty-nine percent said that most Ashland high school students would agree or strongly agree that using marijuana is never a good thing for anyone my age to do. So there's a low, slightly lower perception that most of the Ashland high school students would agree with those statements. But we know, because we have data from this same survey at Ashland High School, uh, that most of the students there do actually agree with these statements. Um, for alcohol, sixty, this isn't on the graph, it's just separate, um, but for alcohol, sixty percent of our high school students responded that they agreed or strongly agreed that drinking isn't a good thing for anyone their age to do. Uh, for commercial tobacco products, ninety percent of our high school students responded that they agreed that, or strongly agreed that using commercial tobacco isn't a good thing to do at their age. Um, for electronic vapor devices, sixty-three percent of our high school students responded they felt that they agreed or strongly agreed that using those products isn't a good thing to do, uh, for people their age. Uh, and for marijuana, sixty-two percent of the high school students responded that they felt that you, that they struck, that they agreed or strongly agreed that using marijuana was never a good thing for someone their age to do. So we know at the high school that those norms do agree, um, but we can see at the middle school that there's a lower perception that those norms actually are existing at the high school. Um, so that's an area of improvement for sure, to sort of adjust that perception. Uh, and moving on to the very last graph, which has...
Sorry, I have a question, so let me...
Yeah.
Of the, the different questions that the bars were really...
Yes.
What, what was the relative percentage of the students that answered all three of them? Was there any differences as far as, hey, they answered for themselves but didn't answer the ones for the high school one? So, because some of these are, you know, quite lower, and I, I didn't know whether it was because, you know, a fair, fair majority of them might have not answered that third part of the question.
Right.
Answered the first two, or are, are the sample sizes for all three of them similar?
I think we did get, and I'll turn to Betsy and Dave also in case they, the room was definitely, but we had really good response rates uh, from the student body for the survey as a whole. I don't think we had any drop off sort of further down into the survey. Um, most students who took it finished the entire thing, if I'm correct. Um, so it shouldn't be any different. The, uh, gap, uh, between their responses about middle school students and their responses about high school students, um, it might be due to a number of things. It might just be due to the fact that the middle school students know other middle school students, they know the culture at that school, um, but they might just not be as familiar with the culture of the high school, just because they haven't gone there yet. Um, and there do tend to be, the data seems to indicate that people tend to have a pretty good estimation of what their own peer group looks like, but they might not know what an outside peer group looks like. Um, so that might be why there is such a difference.
And, and the, the second question, uh, for the most part, uh, the bars correlate pretty routinely
Yes.
with the exception of vaping.
Yes.
Uh, where the, the self-bar was relatively consistent across all four questions.
Yep.
But vaping, there was a significant, large, significantly larger gap for perceptions of what others do both at middle and high school. Um, are you able to draw anything from that or have any insights as to why that might be? I- is it because they are seeing these things, um, and, and just assuming that if they saw it once or twice, that it's happening more, more, more regularly? Because, like I said, the rest of them are ninety, eighty, you know, the, the bars are ninety percent self, eighty percent middle.
Yep.
Right across the board, and then that one dips down to sixty.
Right.
Right, so that, that one's a, that one's a bigger gap.
Right.
So...
Um, it might, again, be due to any number of things. Uh, we know from some of our survey data, uh, from the Metro West survey, we saw a pretty big jump in vaping. Um, I honestly can't remember off the top of my head if we asked a perception of harm question, uh, which is a question that assesses like, how harmful do you think
Right.
uh, using X substance would be. Uh, so I can't remember exactly if that question was on the survey. Um, but we do know that it's, the use is more common. It's still not the majority of students, definitely not at the middle school, not even at the high school. Um, but it might be that it's just seen as more common, uh, in general. Um, it might be that there's, um, different perceptions around it because people are seeing it more. Um, it could be any number of those reasons. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I, I, I didn't necessarily expect you to be able to put your finger on it, but, uh, that just jumped out at me as
Yeah.
the rela, you know, the, the other ones are relatively consistent, and that one had a bigger gap than
Yep.
than the other questions.
Yes, yeah.
That's sort of a, a related question. Um, just looking again at, at the, the blue bar, right?
Yep.
The one that's a self-perception versus the other. And that, and for each of these questions, it captures answers that are agree or strongly agree. And I'm wondering if there's a difference between sort of the agree versus strongly agree within that bar
Mm-hmm.
for this particular question on vaping, or related to vaping, or whether, you know, it's typically fifty-fifty or how it is.
I cannot remember off the top of my head. Um, I'm happy to send the full report around, um, so that you can take a look at it. Um, but I can't remember off the top of my head, honestly. Yeah. Because usually we try and, since that's where the real agreement is happening and students are indicating that they actively agree and they're not just neutral, um, we pull those two together. Uh, but I, I couldn't tell you if there's definitely a difference between those two. But I'm happy to send you the report, so you can take a look yourself. Does anybody else have any questions before I move on to the last of our graphic slides? All right, this one has a lot of bars, so if anybody has any questions, feel free to stop me. Um, but this is a graph, uh, about students who, both students reporting that they had never used substances and students' perception of peer use of substances. So again, the blue bar is students at the middle school reporting about themselves. The red bar is students who took this survey reporting how they felt most other middle school students would respond. Uh, the purple bar is students who took this survey reporting how they felt most Ashland high school students would respond. And the yellow bar here is actually, uh, pulled from Ashland high school data about the percentage of Ashland high school students who responded that they've never used any of these substances. So the substances on this are commercial tobacco, electronic vaping devices, alcohol, and marijuana. Uh, and on this question, it was simply asked like, uh, have you ever used in your lifetime any of these substances? So again, the blue bars, we know, we've known that, uh, substance use is very low at the middle school, so we were happy to see that these bars seem to indicate that most, uh, middle school students have never used any substances. Not to say we're not worried about the few who have, um, but we're happy to see that substance use is really low. Uh, so ninety-nine percent of, uh, middle school students report that they've never used any commercial tobacco products. Uh, ninety-one percent of middle school students report they've never used an electronic vaping device. Uh, eighty-four percent of students respond that they've never drank alcohol, and ninety-seven percent respond that they've never used marijuana. Um, with, uh, students responding how they felt most other middle school students would respond. Uh, seventy-nine percent of the students who took this responded that they felt, uh, most, uh, Ashland middle school students would respond that they had never used commercial tobacco. Forty percent responded that they felt that most other Ashland middle school students would respond that they had never used an electronic vaping device. Uh, fifty percent responded that they felt that most Ashland middle school students would also say that they had never drank alcohol. Uh, and about seventy percent of students responded that they felt that most Ashland middle school students would say that they had never used marijuana. Um, so again, slightly different, uh, perceptions, but still, with the vaping is definitely a little bit lower. Um, but for the other ones, the students seemed to think that the majority of other students would also respond that they hadn't used, um, any of these substances. Uh, again, for the high school, there's a lowered perception of how many, uh, Ashland high school students, the middle school students who took this survey felt would respond that they had never used substances. Uh, so for commercial tobacco, thirty-eight percent of the students responding to this survey said they felt that, uh, uh, most Ashland high school students would respond they hadn't used, uh, commercial tobacco. Uh, eighteen percent of the students who took this survey responded that they felt most Ashland high school students would say that they had never used an electronic vaping device. Twenty percent of Ashland high school students responded that they felt that most Ashland high school students would say that they had never drank. Uh, and forty-three percent of the people who took this survey responded that they thought that most Ashland high school students would say they'd never used marijuana. Now, for commercial tobacco, electronic vaping devices, and, uh, marijuana, we can see that, uh, from the yellow, the sort of yellow-orange bar at the end, that the most of the, our high school students haven't in their lifetime, so that means even once, uh, in their lifetime, used, uh, any of these. Ninety percent of our high school students responded that they had never used commercial tobacco. Um, fifty-six percent of our high school students responded that they never used an electronic vaping device. Uh, and seventy percent of our high school students responded that they had never used marijuana. Uh, it's a little bit different with alcohol, because only forty-six percent of high school students responded in their lifetime that they had never used alcohol. Uh, so this is the one that, in this case, uh, the eighty percent of middle school students who responded that they felt that maybe an Ashland high school student, uh, maybe the, the majority of Ashland high school students would say they had used alcohol. That's the only one where the perception is actually correct. Um, so, but for the other three, the perception, uh, doesn't, doesn't line up with what we know from the high school, which is that most students aren't using those, uh, substances. Um, so did anybody have any questions about that?
I had a couple, and one just generally about the, uh, accuracy of the self-reporting data.
Yeah.
What confidence level do we have that kids are being honest about these things?
Pretty, we're pretty confident. We haven't, don't have ti, the benefit of time trend data for this, uh, and not a lot of middle schools have done, uh, similar studies. But we know from the Metro West data that students are really fairly accurate, fairly honest when they're answering that, because that does correlate to our region. Um, when the people who do the data analysis are doing the cleanup, they haven't noticed anything, uh, out of place. Um, or they remove things that seem to be outliers or out of pattern. Um, and we know that our middle school, the time trend data that we have from the Metro West does seem to indicate that the middle school students sort of, over time, do answer questions fairly honestly.
Thank you. The other, the other is more just an observation. I'm curious if this reconciles... I'm curious if this reconciles with other data as well. And it appears, if I'm reading this right, that the incidence of marijuana use are higher than commercial tobacco. Right? So we have-
Yep.
So, right, I mean, from what's been reported here, thirty percent of high school students have tried marijuana at least once, whereas only ten percent have actually tried cigarette or some other-
Yep.
-commercial tobacco.
Yep. Which is definitely, we always try and say, like, most high school students are making good choices, but there's definitely areas of concern that have come up out of the data, always, but in the past few years especially.
Do you know whether that reflects any kind of change over time, you know, when we've looked at, you've done this now, I think you said, three times, right?
Yes.
Is there any increase in that time period, time period-
For the-
-for marijuana?
High school? So, I'm actually remembering the Metro West data off the top of my head. And I know with that, we, it's gone up and down sort of over the years. There was a spike about seven years ago in 2012, and then we also had a little bit of an uptick this year as well. Other than that, it's sort of like been on a generally downward trend. So seeing that go up a little bit at the high school level this year was of concern.
Thank you.
And I should have asked this before, was this all middle school students, just eighth grade?
All sixth, seventh, and eighth.
Sixth, seventh, and eighth.
Yep.
And I know it's not here, but did you see any difference in how they responded to some of these questions based on whether, or I assume you tracked whether it was a sixth grader, sixth grader and eighth grader?
Yes. So we, I didn't, I don't think we actually got the grade-by-grade breakdown of the data, did we? Okay, then I didn't, I didn't see it before I came here tonight, but we did. And at least for the perceptions of high schoolers, the eighth graders had bigger misperceptions than the other two grades, if I'm remembering correctly. That's the one that really stood out as far as grade-by-grade breakdown, when we were discussing it with Montana State and when they were bringing up some of the data highlights to us.
Yeah, and again, the biggest gap is with the vaping.
Yep.
Their percept-
Yes.
Their perception of others was much lower for that than the other things, so.
Yep. Yes. So, anybody have any other questions or thoughts or comments? If not, then, and I'll move on, sort of just summarizing some of this data and talking about what are the opportunities that we kind of have to use this to actually start changing behavior, changing thoughts. So just a general summary, most middle school students are making good decisions and have healthy beliefs about substance use. We've known that was the case from the Metro West survey. We wanted, we've clarified that with this survey as well. In addition, from the survey now, we have data that most students at the middle school have positive attitudes and beliefs around being respectful, being responsible, and making healthy choices. We can see, like, students might underestimate a little that some of their peers also hold these attitudes and beliefs. But most students definitely feel that their teachers value respect, responsibility, and making healthy choices. We see that the middle school students may be overestimating the prevalence of substance use amongst their peers in some cases, but in a lot of cases, they are correctly estimating that most other Ashland Middle School students are not using substances. And we're definitely seeing that they might be overestimating the prevalence of substance use at Ashland High School, especially amongst those eighth graders. So we do, we have a lot of opportunities. We primarily have an opportunity to talk to the middle schoolers about, hey, the culture here really is, students care about each other, teachers care about you, you think teachers care about you. And we want to make sure that you know that and that you believe that and you all appreciate that. And we have an opportunity, especially at the eighth grade level, to say, to start correcting some of those misperceptions about high schoolers as they're transitioning into that time. And we are going to be working on that here towards the end of the month as well with Dave and the middle school team.
As in, like, next steps to how to get that message?
Yes, exactly.
The best way to get that message across to the students?
Yep.
Yes, okay.
Yes. So that's me with the data. I'm happy to send the full dataset out to anybody who would like to take a look at it. But did anybody have any other questions or comments before?
Any questions, comments?
No, thank you.
Oh, you were very thorough.
Thank you.
Thank you. Getting it together so quickly, we appreciate it. Sorry about the-
No, it's totally fine.
But we were able to follow along.
Sorry, everybody else who couldn't see the graphs.
Yeah.
But I'm glad you were able to follow.
Papers will be submitted with the minutes eventually if there's a question. Community member that wants to look at that, but if they don't choose to do it that way- Right, we can make sure that anybody who wants to see it can get it from them. Yeah, Jim was gonna put it online.
No, I-
See if they have their own website? Betsy, does decisions have its own website that hosts any of these things?
Uh, there is.
Yeah. Okay. This graphic, yeah, yeah. Gotcha, okay.
So, essentially, yes.
Okay. Gotcha.
Is that you?
All right. Still, still no?
Yeah, no.
Okay.
No, what are we looking at?
You still have the slides with you, though.
So the APS pre-K through five literacy journey program. Hello?
A flashy title.
Yes.
I'm really happy and honored and thankful to be here tonight to be able to present this program to the school committee and to the community. I know you have it in front of your packets. We had a great committee that started back in December of last year. We have a few committee members here, Michael, Pete, Kate, Chrissy, and Portia here. Committee dedicated a lot of time. They were very thoughtful and insightful and reflective in looking forward to a new program, always keeping in mind what was best for kids and how can we help our kids really develop that deep love for reading and for writing. So I'd like to thank the members of the committee for that, as you can see on the screen, their names.
Funny, funny guy.
We all looked.
It's all, it's in the script, it's in the script. So, so we created a vision statement. It was one of the first things we did because we wanted to know where we were going and what we valued. And as you see in the vision statement, we were committed to providing students with literacy instruction that focuses on reading, writing, speaking, listening, and comprehension. And the next line's the key thing, to build that love of literacy. We want kids excited to walk into their literacy block in the Mendez and at the ward and excited to read and excited to write. We wanted it to be a balanced approach, and we wanted to be, make sure that regardless of the ability level, kids were exposed to authentic and diverse grade-level texts. That came through loud and clear when we met with teachers from the committee and we did a survey of classroom teachers. They wanted that literature of kids to be authentic and diverse. And we had to make sure that teachers had the resources and the materials they needed to make sure that all student needs were met. So there was our vision statement. We did a SWOT analysis with the committee as to what we value and what we were looking for in a program. And we sent this out to all teachers, and they also ranked the various items. And what we came up with were our top ten items of what we were looking for when we went out and we looked at programs. First thing was to make sure that it integrated easily with special education students and our English language learners. We wanted to make sure that we had a program that had a strong, strong writing component. We needed a program that had a strong phonics program to make sure that kids can both read and write. Numbers four and five were really high on the list. We wanted literature and guided readers that were strong, varied, and authentic. We all know that if you read a book and you love it, you're more apt to read another one. And if you read a book and it's not great, you get turned off. So we wanted to make sure that kids had the opportunity and the exposure to that type of diverse text. We needed resources in the hands of teachers, and not for teachers paid teachers, not scanning the internet, not from old textbooks, but real resources for teachers to meet the needs of all of our students. We had to make sure that it differentiated to meet our population and our ever-changing population. We wanted something that taught not just content, but skills that were applicable across multiple settings. We had, needed a program that provided, as I said, resources and opportunities for teachers to collect data. We needed that constant formative assessment to drive instruction and to help teachers make informed decisions as to what kids need on a regular basis. And we needed something that allowed for teacher and student flexibility and choice. So that's what we were valued, and that's what we looked for in programs. Our journey was a busy one, starting in December and ending in May of last year. We had various schools come in to present the workshop model. We had schools come in to present homegrown models. We had schools come in and vendors come in who were presenting basal programs. We had various consultants come in to meet with us, and we also went out and we did various site visits. And we wanted to make sure that we will make an informed decision. We wanted to make sure that teachers were talking to teachers in terms of what we were doing and what we were doing. So we decided on the workshop model. Instead of hearing from me, I'm gonna have Portia and Chrissy come up for a few minutes and talk about what this workshop model is and why it's awesome for our kids.
First.
Portia's first.
So, the workshop model, I'll give you kind of the skeleton of it. If you give a child or a student a two-hour literacy block, one hour is reader's workshop, one hour is writer's workshop. And both workshops are presented as a five-part predictable routine. They mirror each other. So the kids have the predictability and the consistency that they can fall back on. Having that safe space in which to practice gives them that encouragement to take academic risks. They know what to expect. The workshop model is the same whether it's reading or writing. It begins with a mini lesson where a teacher gives a whole class lesson, and it is no more than ten minutes. There is a connection to their ongoing work. The teaching point is made during the mini lesson. There's a bit of guided practice and active engagement. And then the students are told that they'll be applying this teaching to their independent work time. The independent work time is the next step, and it is thirty-five to forty minutes of just independent work time, kids spread out around the room. And while that's going on, they're practicing the previous day's strategies that were taught, and they're practicing the new strategy that was taught that day. And the teacher is circulating around reinforcing, coaching, conferring with, and assessing individuals. And that's one of the really key pieces, is there's a lot of opportunity for assessment there because the teacher is dealing with individuals or perhaps partners and is able to really see where each child is at. During this time, the teacher may also lead small groups in working on particular skills that need, that a group of students might need to practice. In the middle of the workshop, three to five minutes, the teacher will address the whole group again, kind of get people's attention back together, and extend that mini lesson by reinforcing the teaching point of the day and remind the students to continue using their previously taught strategies. And they go back to their independent work. At the end of that forty-minute session, the teacher reconvenes the group again to share. That may be done as a whole group. It may be done with the students staying in their partnerships, but they all get an opportunity to celebrate what they accomplished in that day's independent work. So you do the same thing for reader's workshop or writer's workshop. That's the format that it follows. Next slide, please? So, just as a little summary, the workshop model gives students short, targeted periods of instruction, alternating with ample time for them to reflect, practice, apply new skills, and work independently under the watchful eye of a teacher who addresses individual needs. Mrs. Clifford will talk to you a little bit more about how that really looks in the classroom.
Okay, and you hit upon a lot of the points, but what we noticed when we visited these classrooms was it really were just communities of readers and writers, which I think we do a lot of now, but it would be more consistent from classroom to classroom. So, you notice student engagement, students holding real books in their book boxes. More of the time in the lesson actually spent, you know, reading. Where now, maybe, you know, in our journeys, they're called up for a guided reading. Maybe they're doing a little bit of independent reading. But in this workshop model, the majority of the time for reading workshop would be spent reading an actual book and talking about it, and during writer's workshop, actually, writing. The teachers would use real text for their mentor lesson. So, for every reading lesson and every writing lesson, they would be, you know, reading aloud a real story that the students would have as models. Again, there would be more one-on-one and small group going on in the classroom where the teacher would continually be taking notes about what students' strengths and weaknesses are. It would be that predictable routine that would go from, you know, K to five. So by the time students are in fifth grade, they'd be really familiar with this approach. Around the classroom, you would see a lot of anchor charts that students would be using as references. And again, just, we really, what we noticed was that in these classrooms, students just loved to read and write, even down to the kindergarten level. It was just, we left NADAC like, wow, just so impressed. I mean, I think that we try to instill that now in Ashland, but it was just really amazing to see it across every classroom. And another thing that we liked is that we thought by us, you know, using the mentor texts, you know, say if we were doing like a nonfiction unit, we could tie into the social studies and science. We have a little more say of what books that we could pick that would align with other areas of the curriculum.
And then finally, the last piece is the professional development. You have to make sure that teachers have the professional development they need to effectively implement this program. Pending approval, we plan to partner with Claire Landergin, who's a consultant. She's been doing this work on her own for about fifteen years. She's worked with NADAC, she's worked in many area schools. And she's put together a two- to three-year plan to work with us. For this year, what we're hoping to do is spend the first half of the year getting teachers to a baseline knowledge of what the workshop model is and also helping them reestablish their classroom libraries. Right now, they have their classroom library set up to function with our current program journeys. They would need to redo that classroom library in order to function with the units that are with the Corkins program. So, we hope to partner with Claire for that this year. Second half of the year, we would roll out the writing program of the Corkins workshop, and then the plan is to, for the 2020-2021 school year, to roll out both reading and writing. And we've been working closely with her, just trying to get an idea of what that would look like. But we have more information to come after this meeting. And that brings us to the last slide, which is questions.
Questions?
Anybody? I have, I guess, one.
One, sure.
Maybe it's to Chrissy or Portia, but you started to talk about it, Chrissy, a little bit about sort of the difference in the classroom, and I'm just curious as to, in terms of minutes, where you talked about this new program being sort of ten minutes beginning for a classroom-wide lesson, then some sort of targeted three-to-five minute window. How does that differ from sort of how much time you might spend on an average class now of sort of full classroom versus small?
Chrissy, would you mind? I'm so sorry. Yeah.
Or Portia, you can sit down.
Yeah. We're gonna be asking you the next question, Portia.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
So I think, you know, again, I think we do a really good job now, you know, we- But I will say with using the journeys, a lot of us have to supplement. And we're doing a lot, a lot of us are doing similar things, but you're not gonna, what I'm doing might not be what down the halls doing.
And this provides for a lot more consistency.
This is consistency. It's also consistency, you know, I think a lot of us do use mentor texts. But, you know, who, what I use in second grade, maybe some of the books they already used in first grade, or maybe then some kids maybe never get a teacher that did that way.
Right, how would you know?
Exactly. So this, that's what's great about having Claire come in. But the time, I think our literacy block will be similar that it is now, but also what I like about this model is the reading and writing are more closely together. So say if you're working on, you know, I think, did they say eight, six to eight weeks, the block? So say if you're working with reading on, you know, nonfiction, then the writing is gonna align with the nonfiction. So maybe the mentor text you use for the reading lesson, then when you kick off your writer's workshop, you're not gonna be maybe necessarily rereading that whole book, but you'll be able to draw out that book, and you're just gonna make those connections for the students. You're also, you know, when you talk about time, if we could throw in, you know, social studies, like say we're doing a unit on, you know, our heritage, for example, in second grade. That can also tie in with the nonfiction. You could, you know, the students, and again, a lot of us do this, but it will just be more consistent. We'll have more, you know, we were even talking about- We'll have more, you know, we were even talking about how great it would be if, you know, with the journeys, it just jumps around so much where this would be like you have this six-to-eight week block where you're working just on one thing. You're not jumping like we're now with the journeys. One week, you're focusing on making connections. The next, you're jumping to this. This would give you a six-to-eight week where you could really, um, work on the reading and the writing together. So I don't think time-wise, it's gonna change the, because I think we do spend, especially in the elementary grades, the majority of our day is on reading and writing. Does that answer the question?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think just to add to what Chr- Chrissy said, the way the program's set up is at the beginning of every week, a kid will get, a student will get a bag with seven or eight books in it. The teacher will pick three or four books based on the student's interest on a current topic. And then the student will do some shopping in the library of books that match his or her ability and level on a certain topic. So if you think of Claire talked about shots on goal. The way our current program i- is set up, if you're teaching theme, a student may read two to three short books a week in order to get the concept of theme. The way the workshop model is set up, a student's gonna read two to three books a day on theme. So at the end of the week, they have fifteen shots on goal to get the concept of theme. Where now the way it's set up, it may only get two or three. And when we talked about that diverse and authentic text, right now, they're really limited as to what they're reading. Where in the workshop model, the teacher's picking the book up, three or four books up for the student. But the student also gets to pick out three or four books to their liking, which is why we need to rearrange classroom libraries to meet the, the way the units of study are lined up.
So, so Paul, um, particularly on the writing side, it, it sounds like this is a shift in the, the time and framework around it. But what about the tools you're actually using during the time? What is this displacing or is it utilizing some of the tools that they're using? Whether it be handwriting without tears or whatever the different programs we have? Because this kind of, at least what was, was presented, kind of talked more about, hey, we're gonna do these types of things during these, and it's kind of a framework of time structure and, and activities, but not the tools you might use during that time.
So, uh, there's a couple of things. One, there's the Corkins units of study, which are the books you purchase. They give you the template and the framework for what you need. Coming up later on the agenda, you'll see, um, a proposal to buy books. And that's the tool that we're using for the reading and also for the writing workshop. So we're buying fif- ten to fifteen thousand small books for kids to read and have in their hands for reading and writing. Handwriting without tears will still have to be there because kids at the younger levels need to know how to write. And that'll be incorporated in the writing piece of it. As we will also have to do phonics with kids to help them be able to encode and decode, um, to be able to read and write. So that will also be part of the reading and the writing component of the program. The main thing is getting the books inside, in the kids' hands to help them read and write. And then the units of study will guide the teachers as to how they teach the skills in both writing and reading.
And so have you?
I was just gonna say, too, like, for writing, because I think-
Someone who didn't wanna go to the mic.
Again, I know, but I really like, it's such a good program. So I'm like, oh, I think sometimes when people think of writing, you think of just handwriting too. So I feel like that's important, like, believe it or not, starting in, maybe even kindergarten, first grade and second grade, students do do the three types of writing. So they do narrative writing, they do, um, informational writing, they do opinion or persuasive writing. So there is a lot, like, I think sometimes you don't think of like these little kids, but they're now, you know, we're now exposing them to those types of writing. And, um, I know you weren't gonna talk too much about now, but there's also eventually like a phonics program that will be put into it. And Portia knows a little more about it than I do, but I think even in that, there's the handwriting practice as well as part of that program. Yeah, the letter formation and all that. So handwriting will still be part of this curriculum, it just might be presented a little differently.
And so did you present this to the other teachers or just, so you're, you had the committee?
So we had the committee, we kept them informed throughout the way. Uh, in, I think it was the second day of school, I presented to both Warren and the Mindes, asked for questions, really didn't get any. Then when I asked Pete and Mike, I'm like, why didn't people ask questions? And they said, because they want it. So I already presented them, so staff is aware that we're here today. And I also presented the similar PowerPoint to them, so they saw all the information.
How, how does this work with, um, iReady? That was just starting, I think, when-
Correct, so-
I went through fifth grade.
Correct, so what iReady does is, it's a tier-two intervention. So iReady's identifying gaps, where, where students have gaps. Uh, where we plan to use iReady will be, instead of using it during the literacy block, we'd be using it for tier-two intervention during intervention block or a small group to identify student weaknesses and work on those weaknesses. It's not going to teach kids how to read and write. It's not aligned at all with the units of study. It'll be separated apart as a tier-two intervention through our RTI program to help mitigate gaps that students have.
Is that, is that used, it's used with all students though?
So all, all stu-, so the way it was used last year, and I believe, uh, for this year, is that kids take the benchmark assessment in September. We just got everything up and running. And from there, the program will identify areas of weaknesses for each individual, individual student. There's then a lesson that goes along with each of those areas that students, I, I believe they did forty-five minutes a week last year at the Mindes. So we're gonna continue with that. And then as we phase in this, um, program, we'll have to see where that goes in our, in our intervention block.
Thank you.
Right, thank you, and thank you everyone for coming, I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Okay, next up, North American Hockey Academy.
Welcome, I'll just do a frame of reference for everyone, so, um, so maybe a week or two, two weeks ago, uh, we were approached, uh, with regard to having, uh, the North American Hockey Academy, set up as a private institution in the town of Ashland. And under Mass general law, the school committee is responsible for approving or not approving, uh, private schools within our community. So in order to, to do that, uh, I had asked, um, the academy to present a lot of information. It's very, uh, very complimentary, very thorough. Uh, all the information you provided, and I went through it in-depth, uh, was, was fantastic. And questions from an academic standpoint, I clearly, um, convinced that the academy that you run is of high quality for, for our students who, none of them are, are, are our students. Uh, but our students, because collectively, look, all students is ours. And, uh, you know, it was well, well-done and well-put together, so, um, by way of that, please introduce yourself and go from there.
Well, thank you, um, thanks for having us and welcoming us to the Town of Ashland Committee, um, tonight. With me tonight, we have, uh, sorry, my name is Toni Anne Maiano. Um, I am the academy director for the North American Academy. Uh, tonight I have Nelson Scherthman, he is the academic director. Um, also, Bill Driscoll is here tonight. He is the original founder of the academy that originally started in nineteen ninety-nine. Um, so this is his twenty-year anniversary. And then also Derek Alfama, who will be the general manager for the academy. Uh, so again, to go off of, so the academy started in nineteen ninety-nine, um, Bill Driscoll founded it. And it's a elite female hockey academy. Um, girls from all over the country, Canadian provinces, provinces, come to our academy to basically prepare them to play college hockey, um, down the road. We are a nine-to-twelve grade academy. It is a five-month program, so they come from their home expected school. Um, they come to us in October, October sixth to be exact. And they stay with us at our academy through March eighth. Um, so again, we have been a private, um, independent school in the state of Vermont in Stowe for the last twenty years. And we are looking to transition it to Ashland and Wellesley this year. Um, we are skating out of the Boston Sports Institute, has just opened up in Wellesley. And we will be residing at the Warren Conference Center for the five-month span. Um, again, we have thirty-five girls from, again, all over the country, California, Alaska, Utah, um, which is awesome. They're all, they come here to train and we provide the best resources to succeed in off, on the ice and off the ice, especially academically. Um, we hold our standards through, for the NCAA Clearinghouse. Um, we have over hundred courses that are approved through the Clearinghouse, um, as all these students go on to play for the NCAA. Um, we have had a percent of a hundred percent, uh, graduation rate, um, every year, year to year. And they go on Ivy League schools, Harvard, um, Boston College, locals, and out in Minnesota. Um, so it's a very unique, um, organization that has been running substantially. Bill, who's our founder, he's, you know, honestly created the women's hockey world. Um, and I know that firsthand because I wa-, I am a Nahha alum. Uh, I went for three years, my sophomore to senior year. And then I went on to play college hockey at Boston College. Um, so I'm excited to take on this role of being the new director and bringing the program, um, hockey academics, um, to new heights and to really, um, you know, get these girls ready. Um, and I'm excited because I went through it, um, when I was in high school and through college hockey and played at all levels, um, played professionally. So it's how we can give, um, these student athletes all the resources that they need to prepare them for that next level. So in terms of diving into the school academics, obviously, um, so it was a ninety-five-day school, school year. Um, so they start at their home school in their home, uh, home state. And they come to us, so we are handedly, um, and Nelson can tell you more, he's the academic director. But, um, we are very flexible in terms of our, what we can offer to our students. Um, they get, they supply us with their courses, syllabi, and we construct our, um, schedule. And with our teachers here, and we conduct up to seven periods per day, uh, forty-minute periods. And then, um, and following, obviously, the NCAA, we hold up to our students to that, um, grade level. And, yeah, it's kind of, would you have to share anything on the academic side?
Do they go back to their, their home school?
They do, so, exactly. So they are here, they come in October sixth, um, and then they'll go home for Thanksgiving break, Christmas break. And March fifth is the last academic day.
Just from a logistical standpoint, I'll give you an example. We have students in our town, in Ashland, in the Ashland High School, that actually matriculate to Stowe, Vermont, uh, to actually go to the, uh, ski academies or to Burke. And for the five to six months. So those students then come back, uh, to Ashland High School and will eventually graduate from Ashland High School. Similar set.
Yeah, so Nahha's been actually next-door neighbors to the Stowe Academy. Um, so it's basically the same model which we've, and Bill has, uh, conducted for the past twenty years, um, to give these girls the best training resources.
Uh, what, what precipitated, why are you, uh, choosing to come from Stowe down to?
Yep, um, it's to honestly bring the new pro-, program to new heights, um, facilities-wise. You know, being able to play out of the Boston Sports Institute that just opened up. I mean, it has everything to offer for these girls and to take it to that next level. Rink-wise, and this is hockey, for the hockey, this is the, the mecca of women's hockey, um, for youth and, and for recruiting. You know, we, we provide the best resources to get our, our student athletes to recruited for college hockey. So coming down, we decided to come down to Mass to get, to upgrade facilities and, um, for recruiting purposes.
So do you intend to stay in Ashland, like, in the long term and, and keep working with the Warren Conference Center? Or is that sort of temporary arrangement while you, you find a residential home? What's the long-term plan?
Right, um, it's definitely for the long term, I would say. Um, the Warren Conference Center is a beautiful facility. I just drove by it again today, I was like, this is awesome. Um, it has everything these girls can offer. Um, and it's, it's again, it's getting them to realize more about reality. Um, these are top-end student athletes. We wanna kind of give them that college atmosphere, um, prep them before they're, they, before they attend college. So I would say yes for the long run. Um, and again, as a business, we always want to make the right decision for the business. Um, and we're very happy where we are today, for sure.
And so do you, are the classes taught in, in like the conference room space there?
Correct, yep, so we're, um, so there's two conference rooms, large conference rooms, and they have two smaller ones, correct. So we'll be out.
The Warren Conference Center's happy to have attendance.
Yeah, they are. No more outdoor rinks at Stowe?
Nope.
I grew up there.
Where do your teachers come from?
So, yep, so we have about over fifty candidates right now that we are, um, interviewing and looking from. So around from locals, a lot from Worcester, some from Ashland, um, outside the city. So a little bit from nearby Mass, obviously for, um, transportation reasons.
What I can say about the teachers is there's a, um, as a, as a educator myself, a lot of my education I do via tutoring, which is, uh, very close to what we'll actually be providing for them. All the classes are one to four girls each. And, um, that's a very rare thing to allow the educators to have access to. Uh, small group, a small school, every one of those students are very motivated, they have very clear goals in mind. And, um, we give them a, uh, environment where they can work virtually one-on-one or two-on-one with, um, these girls. And so, uh, that's an opportunity that a lot of people like to take, non-traditional, uh, teachers. Uh, these are not people who are already teaching in the public schools and the private schools. These are people who might have, um, taught, uh, we spoke to someone last night, someone who's taught for many years but is retiring and moving back and wants to do less work. And, um, our school day is smaller because it's, uh, more concentrated in time. And so they can come for a much smaller period and still get the, the emotional fulfillment from working with these girls and teaching them. And you also have people coming out of the professional world that have always wanted to teach, but the hurdle to get into actual public education is very high. Um, and this gives them a, a way in. So it's actually a, a very pleasant, pleasantly surprising amount of feedback, very quality people that have stepped forward.
So it doesn't sound like the teachers are, are residential. So who are the adults that live there with the girls?
Oh, yeah.
So, yep, so we have four coaches on staff, um, and we'll be living at the Warren Center with the girls, the thirty-five girls.
I mean, I guess my, my question is, I don't personally feel qualified to judge, you know, what, what they've got for an academic curriculum. And I guess I'm kind of looking to you, Jim, based on your review, um, knowledge of sort of what's contained. And I tried to read through the materials, but I felt like, um, you know, I really was gonna be looking to you and Paul to, you know, tell us that you're comfortable with this if we were supposed to.
Yeah, most comfortable, you know, in terms of meeting the needs of, of the students who are attending. And, and again, it's always challenging, right? When you're coming from Canada, California, you know, Wisconsin, Flori-, wherever those, the, the standards exist within Massachusetts, which we know are very high. Uh, but when you look at the program of studies and offering the AP classes and you're offering, uh, very high-level courses, uh, it's, uh, it's equivalent, uh, of any of our top-notch high schools. So I feel very comfortable, like I said, I went through, it's a very well-put-together package, so.
Well, it does, I mean, school committee approval is neither an evaluation of program quality or endorsement.
Correct, we don't do any of that, that's correct. It, it's, but it's your job to either approve-
Right, we need to know what we're approving.
Or not approve, right? A private school. And then we, we do, we are required though, by law, to report it to the Department of Education, that it exists.
If we approve or not approve.
It's one of those burdens they put on us with no guidance and-
That's right. It's exactly right. But there's no, yeah.
No guidance and no repercussions.
Right, no, not, no repercussions.
As long as they go together, it's fine.
We got two, we have two attorneys here, so we wanna make sure. Right?
That's why we threw it over to Jim.
Yeah.
What do you say? So, so it does say, I mean, we're limited, the school committee's responsibility is limited.
Yeah, it's just the approval process.
So I guess I'll make the motion.
And I think, um, but I do have something, I mean, so do you want, I was thinking, in the motion, do we wanna say that, I mean, we would, wouldn't we like, would we like them to come back in a year and we approve every year? Or like, is there any guidance in there? Or we just give one flat?
It's a, it's a one-and-done for-
A one-and-done.
Which, which also makes-
And so we have like, we have private preschools in town.
The school committees are encouraged to adopt a private school approval policy that incorporates a periodic review of previously approved schools.
Why don't we just do this now, we can talk about-
Talk about that later?
Yeah, if we want a policy that would apply to everybody, we don't need to involve them in that. So, I mean, what I'm thinking about is like, Jim started to say we have private preschools or Montessori schools or what have you. We haven't ever asked them to come back in, presumably somebody along those lines.
That's correct.
But that's a broader question that maybe we should talk about as a policy matter.
Okay, that sounds good. Who's got the motion? Uh, do you wanna read it?
Move to approve the North American Hockey Academy as a private school national mass.
I'll second. All in favor?
Thank you, thank you very much, and we are very excited to be-
Good luck, enjoy Ashland.
Bella Vassar is, uh, she is the daughter of which Vassar? Do you know?
I don't know.
Who was it?
And they're in Facetime?
Yeah. Which, was it Mike or which, which? Yeah, it was, okay. It was classmates of mine, yeah. So, you know, when I, when I read it, I was good. It goes back to Harwood, it all goes back to Harwood, so.
Thank you and welcome to Ashland.
Have a good night.
Have a good night, thanks.
Okay, we're back to the blueprint. We spent some time on that this summer and, and even prior to that, you had a working group.
Trying to get through here. So, yeah, so.
Can I?
Uh, you don't have a copy of it in your file, um, I don't know why.
That's right.
Nothing has changed, um.
Okay, so I didn't miss it.
You didn't miss, no, I'm looking at myself, I'm like, I was getting ready to look at it and pull it up on the screen, um.
Could look at it.
Yeah, that's not happening.
So, uh, the, the, the only thing that, and, and that you're missing is the entire packet. So the first, the second day of school, we had all of the buildings take the priority areas. And they're working, and they still have, actually have a couple more to work through in their next faculty meeting. Uh, where, what actions they will personally take within their buildings to meet the priorities, uh, which is great. We've never done that before, I think it's, it holds everyone really accountable, uh, at the building level. Um, so we're, I'm really excited, and I know, you know, Pete had great conversations with his staff, and he's the only one still left here.
He just wanted to put his resume at the Hockey Academy.
And, uh, and he, you know, but, but he, uh, yeah, so, uh, so he, you know, he had his staff work through the priority areas and say, okay, what are actions we personally can take? In, um, in our school to meet these goals, where there's the well-being of student, or, you know, students and faculty. Uh, so it's exciting, and I'll probably be presenting that actually in October, the entire packet. Um, and, you know, what I wanna be able to do is just, um, you don't have to approve it tonight, we can wait until that whole packet's in together if you'd like. Um, but I, part of it is, I would like to get the mission statement, vision statement, and the priority areas out in the public, um, domain, that's all.
So I, just to refresh my memory on how we left the vision and mission, did we decide that the, sort of the priority pieces were really the mission, the sort of how we are accomplishing the vision? Is that the way we talked about it?
No, no, so, so, so we adopted the, the mission of.
Right.
Every student, every day.
Okay, right.
Yeah, so, 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 so the mission becomes the tagline, if you will, right, um, so I, I think that was the only permutation.
Correct.
Fair enough.
And there was nothing, we didn't change anything, it was just, I, it was the opportunity to share it with.
So my takeaway from our last conversation was, we had consensus on, on, on what that was.
Right.
So I think it's only a formality to vote those things, so.
Does anybody have a copy that we could at least read into the record? So it was very constant.
So you know what, so why don't we do this? It's not a big deal, so let's not vote on it tonight. Uh, and I will have, what, the last time I put the blueprint together, it was actually a huge, a, a big document that shows, uh, everything in it. And I will have that prepared for the October meeting, I just wanted the faculty to be able to get through. Uh, I know the high school didn't finish one of the, the, um, improvement priority areas, so that'd be great.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, we can move off on that.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry about that.
Thanks, Jim. Student Activity Accounts, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
Yeah, as, every year you need to be, uh, authorizing these and see which ones we have here, Ms. Durand has given us.
Yep.
Um, and I don't know if you wanna read all of the activity accounts, but you could say, uh, as presented.
In school?
As presented, yeah.
Yes.
And, um, then the whole committee has to sign them, um, which I do have a copy, you do, right.
Oh, we do, okay.
Yeah, as, 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 as long as then the, they reflect in the minutes what they were, so as long as we.
Correct, Erin has them, I believe.
Okay.
As long as we put them in the minutes.
They're, they're on there, yep.
All right.
So, and there are, there were student activity counts from all, all our schools, correct?
Correct.
Except Pittaway, I assume.
Correct.
I assume it's not.
There may have been one, let me see if Pittaway, because if they'd received a grant, um, it would have been possibly in there.
And then it's middle school, high school, I do not see one from, from Pittaway, just the other ones.
Nope, nothing. Nope, only, correct.
Okay.
All right, so.
Middle.
Hit it.
Want me to do it?
Mendez, Warren, yep, no, nothing Pittaway.
Well, so, so, mo- I motion to approve the FY twenty Student Activities Clubs and Accounts as presented.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you.
Do you want me to do the second part?
Yes, so we need the other one to authorize the.
So the next part is, uh, I motion to authorize the building principals and their designees to receive and disperse student activity funds in accordance with school committee policy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, Ashland Cable Access Board Appointment.
Yeah, so last year Makita Keegan, uh, filled the position, um, for part of the year. And this year, um, they're asking, uh, the Cable Access Board is asking that we reappoint her to the two-year, uh, term from October two thousand nineteen to October twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
So moved?
Move to reappoint Ms. Makita Keegan to the Ashland Cable Access Board for a two-year term, October twenty nineteen to October twenty twenty-one.
Oh, I just hit.
It wasn't specific enough for me, Mark.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye, excellent, so, okay, Warren School, new ESP position.
Yeah, we, this was a discussion at one point, but it needs an official vote, uh, with regard to, uh, we have a student move-in that needed a, um, a one-to-one, uh, at Warren for ESP. And it, it's, we're just transferring some funds, um, to cover the cost.
Okay. And, not a problem.
No, Barbara, no, nope, no problem.
Okay. All right, uh, will I continue?
Please.
You can do it. All right, move to approve, I know, and I owe it, I owe it, move to approve funding for a new ESP position at Warren School for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year as a transfer of funds as presented. Does that make sense?
Do we have a second?
Want to go on? Second.
Rachel will take it, she's not.
All in favor?
Aye.
She's like, I got one more to do, you guys take up the space.
Yeah, quickly, right?
Okay.
Hey, she sat through that first, uh, first day of retreat.
Yeah, that works out.
Well done.
Yeah.
This involves anything.
Listen to us talk about a couple words for an hour.
Thank you for being there.
It's awesome.
Yeah, that's a great insight, too.
Yeah, yeah, we're so glad you were there because you set us straight.
Yeah.
It was great, thank you.
We need common sense to intervene in what we talk about.
Okay, there's a pilot program for the superintendent, uh, evaluation.
Yes, JetBlue is offering me tickets.
Awesome.
Uh, to, my brother's actually, my brother-in-law's down in Florida right now getting, he's just been, actually moved to captain of JetBlue. And so he's down there for a month training.
Can he help us all out?
For, for one of the, for the pilot, no.
One of the big ones.
Oh, pilot, I see.
One of the big ones, no, no, he does, he does the big ones.
Wow, that was a really weak connection.
Yeah, so, the, the Department of Education, over the summer, they actually presented this, um, at our superintendent's conference. It, they're looking to revamp the rubrics for not only superintendents, but teachers and, uh, business directors, assistant superintendents, and finance directors. And so there's a pilot program that the department is running this year, and the forms you have, what it shows is that they've reduced the number of indicators. So for instance, if you were to look at the past documents I've shared with you for superintendent's evaluation, under say standard one, right? There, there currently are six indicators, there were fourteen before. And so they've reduced the number, bless you, oh, of the elements, if you will, within the standards. And, and part of the reason is, they want it to be more user-friendly, two, more observable for school committees to, to be able to, to actually evaluate superintendents appropriately. Uh, three, they, they're looking really for superintendents if you, I handed to you a similar, uh, individual sheet tonight. And on that sheet, what it shows is the, the, um, the indicators, but is it a focus indicator? Meaning, so when I set my, my goals, um, where, they want us to look at focusing in certain areas. You, we can't focus on all thirty elements, or all fourteen, six in just standard one. Where should the goals focus? And that's really a discussion that you're gonna have to have, um, as a committee, if we decide to go with the pilot. And so when you're looking at doing the evaluation, you're checking the box, this is a priority to us. And that's what you're going to evaluate, so the other pieces could be proficient, if you will, you know, if you're not really focused on observing those. And I just find it interesting, I think it'd be great to get feedback, uh, from the department. Um, they're looking for people to pilot it, it's not anything that's, um, out of the norm that we would do anyway. Um, it's actually, I think, more manageable if you read through, I, I was looking through a couple of them, uh, today, and, and, you know, like fiscal systems. And page six, so leaves the administrator team to develop a district budget aligned with the district's vision, mission, and goals that addresses needs of all students, allocates and manages expenditures, provides regular updates on implementation of the budget. You know, those are things that we should be doing, right? And you can observe that, you can, you know, that's something that, to me, I would never say that should be a priority for me, 'cause I think that's my strength to begin with. So I wouldn't say, hey, I wanna focus on that, it'd be a really simple way out for me. Um, because we do, as you know, include our administrators, we do ask for them to come in and provide insight in the budgeting process. I'd rather say, hey, you know, is there another piece, like the human resource component, where we know we're struggling, continuously struggling, even though I think we made great inroads this summer, um, in our buildings with a diverse, um, teaching, uh, and support staff, uh, personnel, uh, which is awesome. But, you know, that's, it's really just me asking your permission to, to utilize this rubric and apply, uh, with the Department of Ed to use, uh, the, the, um, pilot program this year.
Now, for you to use it for others, or for?
For me, with you, it's a super, it's only for the superintendents at this point in time, right?
I mean, I, I had, um, read some of the stuff that the M A C had put out on this and, and shot Jim an email, shot him an email just saying, yeah, let's talk about it. It was over the summer, and it was in particular when we had just kind of finished working through our vision statement and talked about the forward-looking.
Yeah.
And, you know, I thought, oh, you know, here's something that maybe, you know, I, I don't know that it's forward-looking in the sense that it's anything more than the easier way to do things. But it felt like it was, if it's the next iteration, we ought to at least have a conversation about whether it's something we wanted to do. Um, I didn't have a strong opinion one way or the other, it seems like we haven't had any real challenges with the way the evaluation system has worked.
Right.
I do think it simplifies things and tends to be better, um, in my, in my mind, but, um, so I'm, I'm more than happy to, to give it a shot, see how it goes, be part of the pilot program.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, you know, as long as Jim's comfortable with it and everybody else's, I don't see the downside.
Well, that's great, I'm glad you said that, but, yeah, and it does seem like they're saying it's a little more simplified, so.
Yeah.
But, you know, don't mistake, we shouldn't mistake that for, it's, yeah.
Oh, right.
Right, so.
It's, it, 'cause it's, I think it causes you to zero in.
The second paragraph, oh, no, no, I mean, the second paragraph is really clear.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, while the structural difference results in a shorter, less complex evaluation tool, it does not simplify the responsibilities of the superintendent.
Right. Simplify.
It just says that we're focused, we're picking focus areas with, with regard just to the rubric.
Yeah, it's less complex.
Yes, that's my understanding also.
Yeah. Right, yeah, I agree.
Right, so, from, from what I gather from talking to you, this better aligns with the su- roles and the su- your, your roles and responsibilities, right?
Yeah.
So from that perspective, and the fact that, uh, why the evaluation's important, it hasn't really been a necessary tool for us, I don't think, in, in recent years, as far as, uh, we, we provide, we have a constant dialogue, we have feedback all throughout the year. So nothing that comes from the evaluation is, is impactful, I would say. So I think we're in a good position where the tool doesn't matter, we, and we can, we can try this other tool without, uh, negative impact, right? Because we are functioning well, whereas, you know, I could see if, if another, um, district, you know, had tensions, had issues, or whatever, that, that might be a bigger stress point for that change. And so I don't think there's any down, like you said, I don't think there's a downside to it, sounds like, from Jim's perspective, it aligns better, um.
I also like the, I'm sorry, I'm in a wrong trip, but the, uh, I like the fact that it, it forces us to have thoughts about what we want to focus on.
Hmm.
Um, I think that, that probably causes us, or should cause us, to be thinking about those things at the front end of the process, rather than the back end of the process. Um, you know, I think we talk about goals, we approve goals, you know, we touched base in February-ish or so, and then sort of say, you know, here's what we want you to focus on the rest of the year. This kind of, I think, forces us to have, is this a focus goal or not, early in the process, and I think that answers things, too.
No, no, I haven't had time to, to look in depth at it. Uh, I think one of the challenges with, uh, performance evaluation tools in general, even in my, in, in my work, right? It, in some ways, they're unrealistic. How are you gonna know on first date, on thi- on some random picked day, that you know what's gon- what you need to prioritize and work on throughout the year? Does this, and maybe you don't know the answer, does this allow for that to be more fluid? Uh, because, you know, we, we struggle with that, even at my work, right? So we set up some goals on some randomly picked, you know, timeframe. And then, you know what, stuff happens throughout the year, and I get pulled in a million different directions, same way that things come up here, or, you know, hey, something, you know, we have to give them. Does this provide more flexibility, or is it kind of just similar to, because, you know, are we, do we have the ability to adjust those, uh, you know?
I, I personally didn't look at it to try to answer, be able to answer that question, and think about it, um, I think it's a fair point. I, I think ultimately it's up to everybody in this room, you know, to kind of, to, to look at that and, and figure out whether, hey, you know what, guess what, new priority, you know, uh, something came up.
Right.
And, um, I, I wouldn't anticipate it'd be more difficult under this, 'cause as Jim said, the rubrics are all the same, right? The, the, the responsibilities are all the same, it's just a less complex form, um.
Yeah, I think it, um, it, it has the potential to just, um, make the evaluation process like more consistent. Because I feel like we have two separate things going on, we've got the goals that typically we do that with, you know, it starts maybe with Jim making some suggestions, working with the chair, the vice chair, you get, where, where's the district headed? We get those, we present them to the committee, and we settle on goals. And then I feel like when we do get to January and February, we really still are talking about whether or not, um, the superintendent is meeting those goals. Then at the end of the year, we get this thing with all these checkboxes, and they're all, you know, just about every piece of it is, has some relevance to the job of a superintendent. But it's not really a document that was designed to work with what we said was our plan, right? So I think it sounds to me like this has the potential, from the beginning, you're looking at this and you're, you're making this a focus along with the goal sheet. So that when you get to that mid-year, or it, more importantly, when you get to the end of the year, you're not like checking off a bunch of things that, you know, just, because you need to get through the document or whatever. I mean, having said that, though, uh, and, and I guess just, these are just thoughts, just generally speaking, regardless of, you know, over time, you might be working with different superintendents or different personalities. But I guess you wanna do, you do want to have some kind of mechanism for you, have your whatever, five, seven goals, you align this with the goals. But what if there's a piece of the job that's not being performed up to standard, and what's your mechanism for addressing that?
I think that's still in better.
It's still in play.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it, it's saying, it's saying, you're still responsible for, for being proficient, by the way, in those other areas.
Yeah.
It's just where we choose to focus.
It's, it's so, right, so the new form, uh, and you don't have it in front of you, but the new form where we write out the goals, it, it talks about, they say, the student learning goal. But what focus indicator, it's very clear now, what focus indicator, of, of the four that maybe you've chosen.
All right. Are you working with? Right.
Does it tie back into for the goal? So your goals, to your point, your goals are tied directly back into the indicator.
Right.
That you've chosen to focus on.
It brings them both together, right.
The others are still in play as an overall part of the summative evaluation. But it, if, if you're really looking at, okay, these are the, the goals and you're focusing on that specific indicator, that's what's observable hopefully to you, and you can see something tangible out of that. You may not see tangible, um, progress in everything, we, we talk about that all the time.
Right. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm supportive of giving it a try.
'Cause, I mean, the one thing we should all be aware of is the forms that, both the one we've used, as well as the one we could use as a pilot, are just forms. And they're forms that are designed around the state regulations of what has to be evaluated, but we could create our own form, we can take either of them and say, well, that's kind of dumb, we can do that in a better way.
Right.
Um, as well, and, and to me, I, I'm not looking to get into that, I'm just.
Right.
And, and I don't think this is a, this is a big deal, and I'm assuming it, it probably, but, uh, his contract is currently also written to where the outcome of this evaluation ties to compensation. So does that cha- does, does this change have any impact on that, how that is gonna function?
No.
It should, right?
No, because you still have the four standards, you're still being rated on the four standards, you're still being rated overall.
You're still evaluating.
So, so the, so the ratings that tie back to how, how we structured the contract are still intact?
Yep, that's right. Correct. Absolutely, yep, yep.
All right, do we have a motion?
We have a motion on this one?
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, just a motion, uh, to allow for me to apply to be a part of the pilot program.
Discussion, discussion. Okay.
It's not, no guarantee yet, so I, I, we have to go through the process.
So, we all, we're authorizing you to do that on behalf of the committee, correct?
Yeah.
So I move to authorize, um, the superintendent to contact Desi and apply to be a part of the pilot program to use the. to use the, uh, in, in new indicator rubric for superintendent evaluations on behalf of the school committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, nice. Okay, approval of state federal grants.
Yeah, as you know, um.
That's what you're stand, that's what you're standing for?
I know, I was like.
As Mr. Sharman, I had two of his children.
You did?
I was just checking up to see how the kid did.
Excellent.
Um, so, again, part of your duties, school committee is to accept, um, all grants that come in. So what I've done here is actually provide all of our grants thus far that, uh, we've received, and these are the, um, Title One, Title Two, Title Three, Title Four, Special Education Early Childhood, Project Include, and Local Equipment and Technology. Uh, the thirty thousand, that's the, the grant for, um, the cameras at the schools. Um, so we've received those funds, um, and there's, there'll be another one in a moment that we'll get to, but, um, just for, to accept these grants in total of nine hundred twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and forty dollars.
Motion?
Uh, I move to accept the state and federal grants, uh, grant funds as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, approval of DESI grant.
Right, so I just, I broke this out separately, um, so first and foremost, I, I would like you to accept the, uh, there was an earmark fund through the Department of Education in the fiscal twenty-one budget, uh, by the, the governor, of three hundred thousand dollars. And I would ask that you please accept that, those grant funds.
Before the governor changes his mind.
And, uh, it's Grant one ninety-two special support earmark funds.
This is different than the, the DESI grant ones that we have to apply for, for the overcrowding, right?
That, this is it. This is that grant now. We, this is, you have.
But now, but now you.
It's, it's now tied through the Department of Education, a specific line item, which is a grant funded, and we have to.
But we, we have to apply as we, did, 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 did the mechanism change? Because before it wasn't, we didn't get three hundred thousand, we got, we had to say, okay, we spent this and.
We're gonna talk about that.
Okay.
Let's accept the money first, and then I'll explain to your point.
Okay, but, I guess I don't understand if we're not, if we don't get the money, how we, how do we, we have to accept the?
We have to accept the grant of three hundred thousand dollars.
The gr- even though, even though we, we have to then apply for the funds.
Correct. We, we, the funds are there and they're ready to be dispersed. We know that.
But then, we can't have them if we don't accept the grant.
Correct.
It's another one of those things we don't wanna ask about. It's how they make the sausage.
It's, it, yeah, it, it's, it's just a function of, I could've, under Title One, I could've, we could've just embedded all those grants together, but I want this to be separate because we have to have a conversation about the utilization. Title One is very specific. We have to use it for certain things.
Right.
This gives us some leeway, but I, but that's why I broke it out as a separate grant to be.
Then I move to accept the F Y State Special Support Earmar- Earmark Grant Award.
The motion is.
That's what it's called.
Awesome.
As presented.
Yeah, the, the, yeah, I mean, the, the motion's different in our, in our thing.
No, I'm sorry, I just.
Moved it up to grant, okay. Yeah, well, there's two, I want, right.
You want, you want to revise it? Motion to accept the grant appro- uh, approved spending of, well, that's approved the spending of.
No, no, I don't, this has.
Right.
So this is not what we're approving right now?
We are approving accepting it first, and then we're gonna approve the spending afterwards.
It's, it's, yeah.
I'll stay by my.
Okay.
Stand by whenever you need.
It's not written appropriate.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
Sure.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Okay, so, the next piece is, again, because we have leeway with the grant itself in terms of how we utilize the funds, unlike Title One, I'm not asking how we spend that, because it can only be spent on very specific purposes. Uh, professional development, some Title One teachers, uh, et cetera. The earmark funds, however, we have some leeway. It's not called overcrowding fund anymore, it's, it's, it's the Department of Education Support earmark. What I'm asking the committee to do tonight is to allow, uh, myself, uh, to utilize the funding to support the purchase of the materials in the professional development of the new literacy K through five program. The, the cost of the program is gonna be well in the two hundred thousand dollar range, more than, um, I don't know what the final number is. Yeah, about two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. That's on the low end right now, because there are some things that we, we could potentially add in, uh, for the program. If we don't do this, uh, the funding of that program will have to come out of our operating budget. I feel like this is the right use of those funds at this point in time.
That funding's a one-time for.
This is a one-time funding and this is a one-time setup.
For, 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 for the matu- it's, it's more, that two hundred thousand more for the materials and, and, and one-time professional development.
Yeah, I'll, Paul, go through, you know, some of the costs, you know, I don't wanna get all through all the specific line items, but.
Yeah, so we need to purchase the units of study for grades K to five, so there's, and, and the shipping and handling for that, so that's a portion of it. Foundations, the literacy pro- the phonics program that Chrissy and Portia spoke about is also here.
But approximately how much are, just talk about.
So, 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 sorry, so the units of study is gonna be approximately thirty-two thousand dollars. Um, foundations is seventy thousand dollars. Um, the, uh, consultant is six thousand dollars. Uh, we also need to, we talked about reorganizing the, uh, classroom libraries. We need bins and shelves to put the books in the way that it's organized. That's five thousand dollars. And we're purchasing over seventeen thousand books at about a hundred thousand dollars total for those books.
Okay, so, so, I, I mean, what I was getting at is, using these funds to do that program, is there any reoccurring cost for the program not accounted for so that we have to absorb anyway, for, for sub- in subsequent years?
Replacement books.
In future, right, in future years, yes, we'll, absolutely, we may add, continue to add to the library, we may find.
But, 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 but not, but there's not a, there's not a set reoccurring, it's not a, not, not a, not, not a licensing or?
No. Well. So, no, 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 just consumables that we might, would normally have anyway.
Right.
Right, so what I've, what Paul and I have talked about was, if we've got the funding mechanism, so the foundations, what's, what's the amount?
Foundations is sixty-nine thousand dollars for the program, and consumables add twelve thousand dollars a year.
So, w- what we've talked about is because there are certain layers of the program and how we actually implement it, the foundations piece might not be in the first year, right? But let's, we have the opportunity to purchase the consumables over this year for two or three years, so get the ancillary materials now.
Right.
While we have the funding, it's not coming out of the operating budget, to your point, the recurring costs for those consumables, we get them now, we store them, we have them, then we can utilize them, yeah.
And, and I don't recall what we utilized the, the funds for last year.
Last year, we divvied it up among, uh, buildings to allow them to purchase textbooks.
So, so, so I, 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 I thought that was, it was kind of like offsetting some of those.
Correct.
Line items, uh, if we're, if we're not using this for that this year, um, what, what, I'm trying to understand.
So we increased, so we increased school choice funding, remember, this year for, in the budget for our, our buildings, we actually gave them more money.
Except Men does, right?
Yeah, because, you know, they had more than nine rounds.
They're, they're, they're really high.
Um, but, but, but we, we've done that, we've taken care of that. Um, so, so from this standpoint, and we gave some to technology for some computers, I just feel like the year plus and even the, the E L A audit, even the year before that, our literacy program needs to be revamped. And this is the time to do it, we have the funding to do it, and we need to do it. And I would recommend, we may not get this funding again, every year it's, it's tenuous at best, and I think, uh, we have the opportunity to make a significant impact in children's ability, uh, to read and write K through five.
No, I, I, I wasn't doubting.
No, I know, yeah, no, I know.
The value of that, but I, I was all trying to understand, if we're using it for that, what, you know, wh- wh- what are we not using it for that we?
Correct.
Right.
Would normally, I say normally, we've gotten the funding for a couple of years now, uh, what have we been using it for that we're not gonna use it for this year because we're doing this?
As I look at the budget, um, I, I feel as though we're in a, in a really solid position to focus on getting the materials we need with these funds. Because our operating budget is, is, it's in a good spot right now, can change tomorrow, obviously someone could move into town. Um, but that being said, um, we'd be recommending this come, uh, the budget season anyway. We'd have to figure out how to come up with this.
I have a question about the, um, the consultant you said, she's, said she'd work with us like two to three years.
Two to three years.
So, did that six thousand cover that, or do we have to work that in next year or the year?
So, some of it's coming out, some of it's coming out of my, my already budget that I already have, and the six thousand, we'll, we'll supplement that.
P D L ready.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay.
How long do we expect a curriculum like this to be good for? Like, are we buying something for the next twenty years, next five years?
It, it, it could be for the next twenty, twenty-five years, because of the way the format is set up and the way the units are aligned, it gives teachers that flexibility. And as soon as, for instance, they may pull out poetry and infuse, um, fables in, and then it's just purchasing the textbooks, uh, uh, the textbooks in order to, to make that, that change.
It's more of a style versus a canned curriculum, right? And that's the, uh, we bought this Journeys well before our time as a group, and it sat on the shelves, and it was not, you know, it, it, you know, it just wasn't really effective for us, even those teachers who used it. So this is, this is our opportunity, again, we've, um, I, the, the movement we have with the staff, I think, is really positive, so.
I guess that was the last question I was gonna ask, is you guys feel really good about the decision for this particular product?
Because the staff, I think, I mean, it's.
The staff bought in.
Yeah.
He, I'll, I'll tell you, we went to see a kindergarten class in, in Needham, and it opened my eyes and they left just in awe. The teacher did the mini lesson for three to five minutes. This was in May, so it was towards the end of kindergarten, you have to build to it. And the kids went off and sat independently and read for half hour, and were putting stickies on the pages. And I said, what do you guys identify? They're like, we have to identify key points in the book and main characters with stickies, so then tomorrow when our parents come in, we can point out who the main characters are and what the main points in the book. And they would finish one book, they'd put it down, and they'd pick up and read a second book. And teachers were in awe that five to six-year-old kids could read for twenty to thirty minutes independently. Uh, and it was awesome, they were all over the room, they were in bean bags, they were in flexible seating, but they were reading books and understanding the topic that the teacher wanted them to do. So as opposed to, like I said, reading one or two books and working in those stations. Kids have those shots on goal where they were reading a book for, you know, fifteen, twenty books over the course of a week, identifying those different topics.
Excellent.
And so if we've, if we presume we're getting three hundred thousand and we're paying two thirty-five for this?
So we may come back and we'll see where we stand, you know, I, I just, to s- to start with this, um, if we had funds left over, we'd come back and ask how to distribute it and disperse it then. We need to get, basically the Department of Ed called us last week and said, here's your line item, get the money in. So, um, so we have to submit the grant.
And as another point, if we, we looked at three basal programs, the cost of purchasing the new Journeys is very similar to this cost here. The same two twenty-five to two fifty.
Basil, what does that mean?
A canned, a canned curriculum.
Okay. Just curious.
It's a fancy word for canned curriculum.
I'd say basil to me is like a, a little.
They don't like the word canned curriculum.
Yeah, they don't like.
Like a little green thing, yeah.
It's a green, it's a green thing you always gotta shove to the side of your.
Right next to time.
Just at this moment.
Alright, I move to accept the grant, I'm sorry, I move to accept the grant approved.
We already accepted it, right?
Approved spending of.
I, I move to approve the sp- the spending of a three hundred thousand dollar grant, one ninety-two special support earmark fund as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent, thank you.
Oh, wow.
Okay.
I, I read through all the hockey thing, I didn't catch the motions. I was actually quite fascinated with it, so.
Pretty interesting.
You know, the fact we went to B C almost killed the deal for me, but.
Oh, there's a couple Holy Cross ones in there too.
Appointment of school committee member to negotiation subcommittee.
It should be plural, right? Members.
Members.
Oh, okay.
It says, it says one member, but.
Member.
I know, it should be members.
Right, so.
I'm assuming it worked really well last time, so.
Believe it or not, we already, um, we already got our letter from the M T A's representative asking us for materials in support of the next round. We are getting closer, and, um.
The contract ends in June.
Yeah.
Okay.
So Mark and I have done it the past tw- two times, um, and I think that
I don't have anything to do with it.
We're a good team to do the third.
I was gonna say, speaking for Lori, I'm happy to agree with you.
I don't wanna do it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think, I think it's a good, um,
Yeah.
we should keep it the way it is unless anybody else.
No, I think that would be great, if you guys are willing, I thought, that's what I was thinking, it would be perfect, if you two do it again.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think.
You okay with that, Paul?
I spend enough time with Jim. I spend too much time with Jim.
Too much.
Well, I'd be happy, I think that would be.
No, no, we, we had a lot of accomplish in the last couple of days.
I'm sure you did.
I don't see any bricks and mortar going anywhere yet, but, yeah.
Okay, well.
That's great.
So.
So somebody needs to make a motion.
I'll move, you wanna do it?
I, I move to appoint, uh, Lori Toski and Mark Terry to the school committee negotiation subcommittee.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, you two, that's awesome.
Oh, it's our pleasure.
Oh, good.
Happy to serve, Miss Bates.
Absolutely. The superintendent's report.
Shall I start with transportation or mosquitoes? I don't know.
Just don't put mosquitoes on the buses, that's all.
No, they're, they're infestation, you know, on the buses.
What are you going to do to make sure we get to our cars safely after this meeting?
I am wearing this fancy little bracelet right here, and I don't know if it works or not.
I'm walking behind Jim.
Are they spraying overhead while we walk in?
Possibly, I don't know. Uh, I've not heard, uh, the, the, the cr- dust cropper, or whatever they call them, crop duster.
I heard the planes fly over.
There's a lot of helicopters around my house today.
There's a threat and we need to respond.
So, yeah, so, clearly I've, I think, sent out an email every day for the past three weeks, but, uh, with regard to, um, mosquitoes and triple E, and, and I don't wanna make light of it, it, it's a very, very serious virus. And obviously with the town of Ashland being in a critical, um, phase, you know, we, we had to make some hard choices and, you know, we had conversations, and I say we, I talk about my administrative team and then myself talking to other superintendents in, in the Metro West area and.
Did you talk to the Board of Health at one point?
And I, we've been to the Board of Health a couple of times, um, and myself and Mr. Marks, the athletic director, and, and when we were, before, we were at a critical risk, and that was before someone in, in Ashland actually, um, uh, was identified, uh, as having triple E. So we had, we had actually taken some precautionary steps before that. And now, now it's, we're, we're at a point where, you know, our pre-K through five students, we're not having recess outside yet, and it's a hard choice that I had to make in, in the sense that, um, we want our kids outside, we want them playing. We, I, I understand completely, I'm, um, that it's a low risk of contracting triple E, I get that. But it's my job to ensure that when we have really hard decisions regarding safety of our students, that we focus on that. And, and I've had a little pushback with, with athletics to a certain extent, right? I mean, we don't have recess, but we can have, uh, students going out and playing sports in the afternoon, during the day. And my counterargument has always been, I trust Rachel, uh, as a, as a teenager, a senior and a mature young adult to actually be able to apply, um, bug spray and/or whatever she needs to apply outside, um, to participate in sports. We cannot and will not ask our teaching staff, uh, pre-K through five, to apply bug spray or creams to our children. Um, I had great conversation with our, our lead nurse, Audrey LaCroy, and we actually have a policy from a nursing standpoint, you can't, we can't even allow them to bring it into the school without a doctor, a medical note. You know, so a fifth grader on their person shouldn't be carrying, because we don't know what, uh, is in all of, we'd have to check all of the, the bottles, the spray bottles. We have to check all the creams or whatever people use, um, if, and because if they spray it accidentally on themselves and it gets in your eyes, or it's, uh, you're, you have a skin irritation to it, we just don't know. So there's a safety protocol that we've gotta follow. So part of that conversation is occurring continuously with Board of Health, uh, with the town manager, uh, with our nurses, uh, with our athletic director and our coaches, and, um, and it's frustrating, I get that, I recognize it. Over the weekend, I did apply for, um, an emergency waiver, uh, to have our schools, and, and as you know, on Monday evening, uh, our schools were sprayed, uh, in the, in the surrounding areas of our, our playgrounds and, and lots, um, by a truck and, and backpacks and instead of the overhead, um, airplane. But we had to apply for an emergency waiver to have that occur. So, so we've had two sprays in town, uh, the third is, was scheduled for last night and tonight. Uh, last night with the winds, uh, the aerial sprays, uh, shut down really early and got probably no more than two or three miles outside the Wellesley, I think, uh, area, uh, as I was looking at the, the map this morning. So, once that occurs, there's still no guarantee that the spray, uh, will mitigate the mosquitoes and, and triple E, it's just, you know, it, it helps. It's just, you know, it it helps kill off some of the larvae and 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 the the likelihood of of more mosquitoes um being born. But that being said, we're gonna continually evaluate it. Uh it's tough, it's frustrating. Paul and I walked into elementary classrooms on Monday and and they were like, Mr. Adams, you cannot go into that second grade classroom. Because they're not happy with you right now, because they can't go outside. It was a beautiful day. Um I get that. But uh I spoke to a lot of parents last night at the fourth and fifth grade um curriculum night as well and and while we all want our kids outside, they were very um understanding that it's not a simple decision that has to be made. And um it's probably worse than snow days, to be honest with you, um because it looks so beautiful outside and and it's, you know. It's, you know, it's it's just something you can't tangibly see, um you know, like it's ice on the roads, so.
Right, and 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 while like you said, it's it's a small risk.
Yeah.
But it's it's a real tangible risk, it's not arbitrary, right? So um where a lot of things that we say are small risks, it.
Yeah, right.
They're not tangible, they're not real, they're not localized like this is and so it's definitely the right, it's definitely a hard decision. I have one of those kids who probably needs to be outside, uh you know, and he's not able to be. But um I think it's definitely a right decision.
So so we're working through that. So besides that, school opened. Um we had a wonderful uh, you know, first week of of just teaching staff in the building. Uh students have been back in now, this is day seven, six? Today Wednesday, seven, yeah. So um the building seemed to be uh doing quite well. I I was with Miss St. Kurt today and and the positivity I I've, I just feel it at the high school is. It was really palatable. It she's like, this is one of the best years, knock on wood, that in her twelve years here in Ashland, she said, it just feels really good. And that's a that's a nice feeling. I don't know, Rachel can speak to how things are going for her, but um.
She's counting days already.
Yeah, she's got homework and she's ready to go. Mr. Adams, wrap it up.
Are you feeling stressed?
Yes, I'm taking physics, so that's, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
That'll do it.
It's a lot. I'm taking a lot of classes this year, but it's alright.
Right, so um.
Nothing I can't manage.
But other than that, it's uh we're we're in, you know, we're we're in good shape. It's it's gotten off to a nice start. It hasn't been unbearably hot, which it was last year uh as well. Uh so um so yeah, that's it. That's all I've got for a report. I just wanted to to, you know, focus on transportation, right, Aaron?
Nothing going on.
For the love, um what do we have, over two hundred uh the first week of school?
You got it in your email.
Almost three hundred late registrants.
What's up with that?
Late registrants.
That's great for the revolving account.
It's great for the revolving account because I, Aaron and I had that conversation.
Oh, good for Aaron.
But not good for her sanity and for rearranging bus routes and the first day of school, you you drive into town and four roads are blocked off. And uh Summer Street and those are really critical roads for our buses actually to cut off from going down one thirty-five. Um quite interesting, but today, um in talking to the principal, every day is getting better. I I looked at last year's stats because we track when the buses are coming in. Last year, we had four buses that were continually arriving late at the middle school. We're down to one and late means they arrive at eight twenty when school starts. Uh bus twelve, um Aaron's got a plan in place for that, which will, next week will start and hopefully we'll see some um more efficiencies with the middle school busing. Uh Pete said today at Warren, uh the last bus came in at eight thirty, no, it was um thirty-three, eight thirty-three, it was like even late fifties two days ago. Like, not eight thirty-three, couldn't have been, eight, when did they start? It doesn't make sense. They eight fifty, it was eight fifty-three. It so the the buses are getting closer and it took us weeks and weeks last year. I told Aaron yesterday, it it was well over a month when we made our last adjustments. You know, we've got huge bus stops because we've got a hundred and fifty kids we've registered this summer, we, Aaron. And it's, there's a lot of work to it and you know, publicly out there, thank you. Um it's, uh nobody knows the headaches that she's going through every single day.
So do you have any sense of why we had so many late registrations this year? These aren't all moving.
Hey, dude, dude, no, that's the one thing we talked about was, first day of school, I had a parent come up to me, she walked by. Yeah, I just signed up three of my kids. I said, why? She's, eh, just just didn't think about it. I'm like, oh, that's great, that's great. Parent who's got a senior, a parent who's got a two in the middle school, like they've been here.
Yeah.
And these are, you know, I bet, you know, majority of them have been here and know and they're willing to pay the extra. Economy must be good.
Wow.
Yeah, right.
So.
Yeah.
Let's see other questions.
But adding the nineteenth bus early was has been, was huge and bigger buses. Um so that's what's allowing her to do some adjustments for bus twelve.
Heard lots of talk about the tinted windows too.
The tinted windows, yeah. Um so that's.
Didn't know about that.
So those are really the two major issues and I'm telling you, they're major issues in every one of our districts. Um at a board meeting today in in Natick, uh Dan Gooda cancer from Needham says, well, you're only five minutes off? How about an hour every day?
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, so.
I I know the other question is, the problem with the roads, I mean, I mean, they're doing all the sewer work and all that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Was that something that was manageable?
No. So a lot of, you have to remember, a lot of the funding for our projects downtown are grant funds and are based on um when the the grants are passed through. The budget budgeting process, right? So when the governor's budget doesn't pass until July and you don't have the funding to pay for things, similar to us, we can't.
Yeah.
They can't start the work if they can't pay the, you know, the contractor.
Right.
So the the budget has to be passed at the state level for the some of those grants to come through. I mean, that every every community right now is under um you know, attack with roads being, you know, you know, dug up and pipes laid. And because the funding mechanism isn't there until.
Do you think there's anything that could be done to coordinate that in the future? I mean, I know what they're doing downtown is kind of a.
Yeah.
It's not just repaving a road, it's it's more complicated than that, but um you know, even if it was, hey, let's not do construction during the first week of school. So not have the roads blocked off, you know, those kinds of things, are those kind of conversations, things that we at least explore?
Yeah, so um after the first couple of days, uh when they started, construction was important. Uh so we we actually made some adjustments of them not starting work before eight thirty. Um and the police have been great with that. Doug Small, you know, we've we've, Aaron's been communicating the last couple of days with him and he's like giving us updates on when some of the projects are being done. And they're saying, okay, if you're on this road, we'll let the buses go through, but um we're not gonna start work until X. And so so there's communication, it's just, it's hard because you you we're actually later in the afternoons than we are in the mornings. So they're not gonna shut down work at two o'clock if we don't let them start at nine o'clock.
Right.
So we can get the buses, you know, the Warren buses home before six o'clock, right, you know, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
It's a challenge.
It's a little bit more of a, I I would think it's a little bit more of a concern with it in the morning because if your first buses are late, it just gets worse.
So the first buses are never late, right? The Mendez buses are always on time. They are, right? I mean, we've, yeah, we've never had an issue with the Mendez bus. It's, there are two buses that go out to Oak Street and Cordova- go all the way out and then they're coming back at that seven thirty, seven forty timeframe or even a little later. And hitting that rush hour traffic already. Um it's really the afternoons that I worry about. Yeah, that's it.
Okay, Paul, did you have anything?
Two quick things. One, thank you very much for supporting the literacy program, all the help for the kids and the teachers. It's gonna be awesome. Um so I really thank you for that. And second, you have my report from the summer. If there are any questions, be more than happy to entertain them. Um if not, that's all I have for tonight.
Yeah.
No, you're good.
Thanks, Paul.
Alright, thanks, Paul. Warren approvals, Kathy?
Warren approvals.
Yes.
It's a big one, right?
Trying to pull my chair in. There we go. Uh between, I'll I'll make it a little bigger. There we go. Between August fourteenth, twenty nineteen and September sixth, twenty nineteen, I Kathleen Bates, authorized by my signature payables in the amount of. Four hundred sixteen thousand nine hundred thirteen dollars and eighty-three cents. This includes general fund expenses of three hundred eighty-six thousand three hundred fifty-six dollars and sixty-four cents. Revolving expenses of twenty-five thousand eight hundred ninety-eight dollars and seventy-six cents. And grant expenses of four thousand six hundred fifty-eight dollars and forty-three cents. Finally, I authorize payroll in the amount of one million three hundred eleven thousand one hundred thirty-four dollars and forty-nine cents. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Kathy.
No problem.
Any policy updates?
No. We have not met.
Does the Mendez our packet or?
I don't, I didn't have.
No.
No, so.
We'll do that next thing.
She 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 had other priorities.
Yeah.
Buses.
Bussing.
And 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 I and I don't think most of the public knows that you handle the registrations for students, the buses, the routes and so thank you.
Oh, good, yes, thank you, Aaron. I'm sorry that happened to you.
And uh been working tirelessly at that, so.
Yeah, tirelessly. No gifts or donations, I don't believe. I didn't have any, yeah.
No gifts. Okay. Excellent.
Alright, let's hear about your activities. Rachel, do you tell us how school is going so far besides stressful?
It's good. Um, yeah, we had convocation last Friday. That was really fun. I feel like that's a special moment for the senior class.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, it kind of brought us all together, you know, at the beginning of the year.
Yeah.
Um so we had fun. Um then I had my first student council meeting this morning. That went well. I have uh my first National Honor Society meeting tomorrow morning. Um I've been meeting with my um friends and other peer leader um members the past couple of weeks. And we've kind of been starting, getting ready to go into the freshman wellness classrooms um and help them with their adjustment to the school, so.
Thank you.
Good, thanks.
Paul?
Uh well, uh so I'll I'll probably just give a update on the building committee stuff. Um so since we last met, uh or at least publicly on 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 camera, we uh we have a contract with the designer, Flansburgh Architects. Um uh so we executed that uh back in August. We had the MSBA kickoff meeting that's uh that's hosted here by the MSBA. Uh they kind of come in and give us uh expectation and procedural expectations uh for for the project. Um we had a uh building committee meeting last night. Um we have our first public forum on the twenty-third. It'll be in the Mendez Cafeteria. That'll be the um the public's first opportunity to meet the the project team, so both the O P M and designer will be there. Um they'll give presentations about the process, what uh who are the MSBA, um what is the grant process, what is the projected timelines, what are we doing? Um to give everybody an update, uh the education, what are we calling it, the Educational Working Group or Leadership Group uh has been working. That's uh Jim, Michael and uh I I believe about a dozen uh dozen people or so on that to start working with um David Stephen from New Vista. On our educational visioning and to develop that educational uh plan that will kind of drive um drive the process. So um what and why that educational plan is so important is that kind of describes not only what we're doing, but what we wanna do in our buildings. And um we'll take that and work with their space, MSBA space template, which kind of determines what spaces we will be able to be reimbursed for. We can build whatever we want, right? But they're only gonna reimburse things uh that fit within that space template uh relative to. And so that educational plan will help justify any time we go, we have to go and talk to them about something that we either need to push or pull on those space needs. Um if if there's something we need, we, hey, we need a, we need, we need more special education square footage than the 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 uh than the template is allowing. They're gonna say, why is that? And we're gonna have to go back to our educational plan and justify that. Um so that's why that's a very critical piece. So this first forum um is more of an informational sharing. It's kickoff forum for the public to meet uh meet the team, understand this process. We're only in the very beginning phase of the of the of the process, uh ask any questions. And then we'll have probably about four public forums. Um the next one will probably be in sometime in October and that will be um a workshop on the educational visioning. So by that time, um the Educational Working Group will have gotten to a certain point, have some uh have some good material. Uh to go share with the community and then and then solicit feedback. Um uh so um anything else, Jim, that I'm forgetting?
Nope.
There's 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 been a lot of.
There'll be a lot of community forums coming up, yeah.
So a couple of questions, Paul, actually, I was curious, do you think it would be valuable to the committee members to participate or to attend any of those events in particular? Um I was, I didn't realize the first one was just gonna be informational, so I can't put it in my calendar. Certainly, I don't want to intrude upon what you guys are doing in the committee, but.
So so first one, it's absolutely valuable because if you haven't gone through it, it's the the understanding what we're what we're talking about. And setting, it's it's a good level set for the process, what the expectations are on this timeline. I know you were joking before when you say, I haven't seen any 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 bricks or mortar flying over there, right?
Yeah.
Um, you know, so I I I think a lot of people don't understand the process and that we're just in the beginning phases of the feasibility.
Well, I'm I'm posing the question really from the perspective of the committee members. I certainly would encourage any member of the public to attend.
No, I I I think it's valuable for the for this for this group because in that process, the first grouped act is this group. Uh because that educational plan has to be voted on here. Um so I would definitely encourage um uh anyone to come to this one. Uh and I I had actually texted Lori, so part of me uh felt feels a little awkward or awkward is probably not the right word. But part of me didn't like the fact that we're introducing the project team to the community before introducing it to this committee and the select board. Uh the two bodies that are are kind of the the voting bodies and and important to the process. Um so but we we need to get these forums out there, so I I definitely want to have uh the project team come before the committee. So that way, uh present here, uh provide uh this this group an opportunity in this setting on camera to ask questions relative to uh to what uh uh what questions we have. Um but it is very, I I would, I we we I sent uh an invitation to the select board, encouraging them to come. Um and and certainly Yolanda, who is the vice chair of the building committee, has been uh providing them updates. Um so I this is, this is a very good level setting. Uh so you're speaking the language, you understand that, you know, the different phases, that next forum, what that means to this process. In developing that educational plan and the visioning. Um so I I would I would definitely recommend that if you can.
Six to eight.
It's six to eight uh on the twenty-third in the Mendez Cafeteria. Uh I don't know if we've, if we've come to any any uh conclusions on uh on child care.
Oh, the twenty-third.
I know we're looking, you know, we're trying to 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 do, to get that in in place. That's not there yet, but um so that would hopefully potentially allow people to come if um. But yes, uh but this, the these public forums, we we definitely want involvement from from um all the committees as well, uh committees and boards. So Fin uh FinCom, Select Board and and certainly.
September twenty-third.
September twenty-third.
And if you could, I, you know, you'll be getting a, you know, an email from me, but October one is also a Tuesday. Which, you know, there there's another work, yeah, there'll be work, that's four to eight though, yeah. I I will send that up to you.
Same thing. Okay. It's a Tuesday, no. Four. Do you want, should we be there for the four to eight?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
I think it'll be four to seven, but.
Yeah, that's what it's scheduled for.
Okay. So you're gonna be pleased.
Um the other question, it was it was more just a thought that was passed while we were talking about um the new curriculum for the K to five curriculum. Um which obviously overlaps with this, the population in the Mendez building is, you know, as Paul, you were mentioning. Sort of seeing the kids go off and read and and the B bags and all that and just thinking, space, right?
Bugs.
Um and and whether or not, if they're hard to just sort of throw out, like to the extent that any of what we're talking about, this curriculum feeds a space need to be, you know, kind of keeping that on the list.
Yeah, and and.
Jim's looking at me like he figured that out six months ago. Just for once, once I wanna beat you to the thought.
No, no.
We all do, we all do. I wasn't gonna say, wow, we haven't thought of that, Mark. Thanks for, thanks for.
I know. I I had to say that. I appreciate you indulging me.
Well, it's like saying.
I'll leave now.
But but but, you know, uh I also wanted to just give an update on different things that have been going on, so um. So, um, once we did, uh, in, in August, get the, the designer contract signed, um, that was a key point, not only just from having it, but that would then, um, set in motion the ability for their designer to get their sub consultants, uh, in mo- uh, in motion, doing the difference. So they've been out to the sites, been, they've been doing boring, so for community's sake, there's two primary sites we're, we're looking at, um, if there is to be new construction. So a- as we've said here before, the MSBA, uh, will require us to, uh, look through several options in this process. So they will say, what, what about just a code upgrade? So bringing the, the existing building up to code. You have to, what does that look like? What, 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 and then it's gonna be, okay, what about, uh, a renovation? A renovation addition and then new construction. So all those things have to be evaluated. And so for the new construction, the, the two primary sites we're look, looking at, I don't think it's gonna be news to, to you. It are the Minda's site itself, um, and also potentially creating a campus over at the, the, the middle school.
My backyard.
Yeah, so we're, we're, we're just.
When you say the Minda's campus, do you mean the, the backfield or where the actual building is or, or any of that?
So, so that site, that site in general. So certainly, um, anybody who has either, uh, seen or heard the different presentations that have been going on, they do throw out just ideas, right? They are completely, you know, all the different designers throughout, uh, options. Um, and they are just completely spitballing, but some of those are, hey, some of the ad renos are phased, uh, changes to the existing footprint, right? And so it might be a three-phase thing, you know, where you're manipulating or adding here, you're building up here, then you're getting rid of the cafeteria, you're doing, you know, stuff like that. So, um, all that's still on the table, um, nothing's been decided, but, um, but I, I, I did, I did post to Facebook the community forum. There were some people that had, uh, asked us to, you know, do, look at different things. So, um, just to let everybody know, the, the, the sites that are in play, uh, at this point are, are those two sites. Obviously, there's, there'd be great synergy over at the middle school site with not only just the fact that there's a middle school there, um, and potentially, uh, but also the, the, the Y going in across the street, right? So that, that would, that would be an amazing opportunity. But it's just one of, one of many that we're looking at. So, uh, and at the end of the day, the, the, the real function of the building committee is to, uh, go through that process and shortlist, uh, the options down to, uh, one that we can wrap our heads around and go, uh, on as, as both, uh, the, the school committee and, and select board and then eventually the town. So, um, so, but that, the signing of that contract allowed, so that, it's, it's been very busy over to Minda's, uh, with, uh, the different consultants coming in. They're looking at the current existing, uh, existing conditions of the building, the current, um, uh, you know, the, the facilities and the, and the HVAC systems. They've been doing borings, as I said, so there's been lots and lots of activity, uh, going on, um, so. Other than that, there, there's nothing going on.
Thank you for your continued contributions and time, Paul.
Yes, thanks for all that. Huge commitment, thank you.
I just wanted, I had my, uh, the first ASH PAC meeting was last night. And, uh, so that was good to get that started for the year. And I also wanted to say, my last child is a senior in high school, so I had my last first day of school.
Oh.
That'd be a first day of, 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 of college, right?
Huh?
It's potentially a first day of college.
Well, I don't really count that, but, I mean, you do.
By that time, she's done, she's done.
It's a milestone, it's a chance.
By that time, you're just kicking it out.
It's the last one? Like, oh, my gosh.
It is big deal.
Lori understands.
I do.
Well, we didn't have that when we had our, our last first day of middle school.
That thing?
Yeah, something I've done. First, first day, I, some, the sixth grade, that's what I, um, I actually don't think I've got much.
Your first first day of middle school, but anyway.
Yeah, something like that. Um, I don't think I have anything to report.
Yeah, I mean, we've, we, this is our first, um, our meeting back, uh, on camera. We did have two full, um, sessions in the summer. Retreat sessions. We usually have one, but, um, this year we had, um, wanted to commit the time to talk about the blueprint in detail and some of the issues, um, around the building project and the Minda's programming. So we did, uh, a lot of work over the summer, talked about our school committee goals, um, and all of that is still in process. As we're gonna have the blueprint coming back next time to vote on it. Speaking of which, next time, um, if everybody's okay with this, um, will be our first meeting in October because we're scheduled for September twenty-fifth.
Okay.
But I'm away, Jim and Paul are not here, and we were able to get the majority of, I think all of what we needed to cover in October onto this agenda. So if you guys are okay with that, I mean, there would be a quorum for anything you needed to deal with, but there's really isn't anything that can't wait until the first meeting in October. So is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Wait, Jim and Paul are away?
Yeah.
Or they're coming together.
Okay.
Um, and, and, and that just made me realize, when you are setting the agenda, we'll probably have something. So there are, um, forms, uh, procedural forms for the MSBA stuff. For example, uh, exhibit A was something we submitted. It, it's, it's a budget, uh, document that just says, here are the, are the categories in which we're putting X amount of dollars in these, so as the project goes along, um, the, there, there might be adjustments to that. And it's adjustment in the pro pay system. Um, the form says school committee chair. And so we might just come at the next meeting and ask for authorization for me to be able to sign those procedural things as opposed to.
Okay.
To come to you, so just, uh.
Cause tonight, I'm gonna ask you to sign it.
Okay.
So he, he's, he's got the thing that you, that, 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 uh, started the conversation the other day, so.
Got you. Uh, everybody good with that? You know, certainly if, you know, something really came up that needed a vote, Jim would let us know. And we would coordinate with the three of you to see if it's a possibility, but, uh, at least for now, just so we can inform the public and, uh.
Yeah, it could be, if, if we have that, we could also do a sort of workshop session. I think it's typically gonna be something that's quick, which is SBA.
Absolutely, sure.
We can get three of us to, uh, to Jim's office to use that space or whatever, we could, we'll figure something out.
Okay, excellent.
Yep.
All right, that's all I've got. Oh, well, Jim and I did, uh, I will just tell you all briefly, we attended a, a meeting with some members of the decisions at a return group, uh, last week. And, uh, really just trying to touch base on the best ways to communicate with each other and the best ways to get information out to the rest of the school district. And, uh, ways that, uh, people in different positions, including on school committee, can help, um, spread the messages that they're working on. So they're working on some of the, um, suggestions for that and we'll, we'll be sharing those with you. Okay?
Sounds good.
Good? All right, I think we're good. Well, we have an action items list that we'll take a look at.
One that we should put on there is just the school committee goals, cause you and I are supposed to be meeting to, as a subcommittee, I guess, to work on that. So we should probably give ourselves a deadline of when we're gonna.
Well, how about, uh, uh, November?
Was it how many meetings?
We'll talk in, in October.
Okay.
And we'll try to come back to this group in November.
Yeah, I'm not sure how many meetings we have in, uh.
In October, we have one only, if, because Yom Kippur is the first, second Wednesday.
And then we end up with one in November typically is the conference, so. All right, we, we should be able to do it by our November meeting though.
Yes, so.
I, I noticed that looking at the schedule this year, there's lots of months, we only have one.
You know, it's always, it always seems the fir- the first half of the year. I mean, we end up like this, September, October, November, I think it's not, not uncommon.
All right, so.
Yeah, I mean, and we, and we always have the option when, when the, um, agenda gets too full or if new items come in. If we can't hold a meeting on a particular Wednesday, we can pick a date and schedule another meeting if we need to. So as long as we're on top of what needs to be handled, we'll make sure it gets handled.
And we may want to, um, and as we get further along, one of the action items is the Minda's academic study discussion.
Yeah.
Uh, we may want to actually, uh, get a couple of meetings in, uh, before the end of November. Because I, as I mentioned to you before, we need to have some fi- finalization, uh, as we're working through the academic programming. October, November are really critical months.
There's a couple, there's a couple of variables we need, we need to, we, we can't have so many variables with the, the plan, otherwise we're gonna have too many options.
Right. Yep. So we'll just, I'll look at some dates and shoot, shoot those out there.
I think we can take these fee items off the, uh, list. We talked about them in the sum, in the, in the summer, right? Was we, the decision to not make any changes right now with fees, does it need to stay on the action items list for now?
I think we want to keep them there because as we were looking at, uh, budget items, uh, for the twenty twenty budget or twenty twenty-one budget, if we were gonna try to absorb something, um, what, what those fees would look like.
Is Barbara coming, was Barbara gonna?
I think we, we were looking at it and felt like, that given certain things that we were looking at in the long-term budgeting, it didn't look realistic.
Right.
Yeah.
To be doing it in the short term, but I think we all, you know, committed enough to the issue to keep it on there to be revisited from time to time.
Yeah, I, I think the action item that we had from that discussion was, uh, you and Barbara were gonna come back with how to fill that gap we were talking about.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Like a t- a three-year.
Yep.
Kind of like a three-year plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, right. That was, yeah, that was a bit of broader, like, budgeting issue.
During the budget, right.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, just.
To keep it on there.
Yeah, okay.
I just keep it on there.
Okay, do we want to change the timing at all or do, are you gonna come back sometime in the fall?
No, it'd be more the winter of twenty nineteen because it'd be during the budgeting process.
All right. And anything else to add to this? Okay?
You know what, actually, the one thing I know was gonna come up on us, we just keep an eye on, is the, um, nomination of a delegate for the conference, right? They, they always kind of get us.
It'll have to be, it'll have to be in October.
It'll have to be at the October meeting, just put that on the agenda.
You made a motion? Did you write that, Erin?
It's not on the agenda, Paul. Not on the agenda, Paul.
She didn't foresee it.
She may not have.
Just save that.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
You need to sign both these.
Second.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.